And we got to figure, we'll figure something out. We'll figure something out. Okay, we'll figure something out. We're gonna get lively tonight. Hey. Yes. Well, I thought this at first was a, oh, 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 postal. You do it, Cam?
Hmm?
You do it?
Better about it, I think.
Yeah, uh huh. Good evening. I can have everyone's attention, please. Good evening, welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, six thirty Tuesday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty four, regular scheduled board meeting. We'll begin our meeting with the invocation. Uh, if we can have Pastor Leonard Himes, uh, come up and lead us in our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. I'd like to ask everyone to stand that is able to stand. Thank you.
Well, good evening, let's pray together. Our Father, we come to thee on this night. And Lord, we're grateful that you've allowed us to enter the month of September and so, Lord, tonight we lift up our nation to you. We pray that in your sovereignty and your watch care, that you would watch over and bless this country. And Lord, for our great county and our state. And Lord, that your protecting hand would be upon all the young people attending schools, all the families. And Lord, here in our county, we ask for your protection as well. All of our public servants and those that labor in administration to make everything go together, Lord, we just ask your hand be upon them. So Father, tonight in this meeting, we invoke your presence, that we would be people of principle, that are people centered for the betterment of our county. Blessed in this meeting and all that takes place, and we will certainly thank you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
Okay, we have several proclamations on the agenda tonight. Uh, uh, we're going to also add a proclamation that was not actually on the agenda. A proclamation recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. The theme recognizes the, uh, this year's themes for the Hispanic Heritage Month is "Pioneers of Change: Shaping the Future Together." This theme recognizes that many Hispanic and Latinos who have paved the way for the future generations to be able to enact change and encompasses the spirit of innovation, resilience, and unity that defines the Hispanic experience. Who's reading that proclamation? Okay. Um, if we could have our communications director, Melissa Robinson, to please come forward.
Good evening Chair, Vice Chair and Board. This evening, we have a proclamation recognizing September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty four, as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas, the Henry County Board of Commissioners recognizes the diverse and vibrant Hispanic communities that enrich the cultural, social, and economic fabric of our county. And whereas, National Hispanic Heritage Month, observed from September fifteenth to October fifteenth, celebrates the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas, Hispanic and Latino communities have played a crucial role in shaping our country's identity through their hard work, dedication, and leadership in various fields, including business, education, healthcare, arts, government, and beyond. And whereas, the heritage, traditions, and values of the Hispanic community are a source of pride, inspiration, and strength, serving as a vital link between the past and future generations. And the contributions of Hispanic and Latino individuals continue to strengthen Henry County, making it a more inclusive, diverse, and prosperous place for all. And whereas, Henry County celebrates the richness of Hispanic culture and strives to foster understanding, appreciation, and unity among all residents regardless of their background or heritage. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of Chair Carlotta Harrell, Vice Chair Johnny Wilson, and Commissioners Neet Robinson, DeAngelo the Third, Michael Price, and Kevin Lewis, we recognize September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty four, as National Hispanic Heritage Month, and call upon all residents to recognize the immeasurable contributions of Hispanic Americans to our economy, our culture, and our society, this seventeenth day of December of twenty twenty four.
And thank you. We're gonna get through all of the proclamations and then we're going to, uh, step to the side to take pictures. Uh, next proclamation is recognizing volunteer firefighters that laid the foundation for the success of Henry County Fire and Rescue. If we could have our fire chief, Chief Jonathan Burnett, to come forward.
Good evening Chair, Vice Chair and Board members. Uh, my name is Jonathan Burnett and I currently have the honor and the privilege to serve as the fire chief for Henry County. Tonight, I want to read a proclamation recognizing Henry County's founding fire department volunteers. Whereas, today, Henry County Fire Rescue Department took root fifty years ago as a volunteer fire company comprised of dedicated residents who saw a need in Henry County to provide fire protection to the community. And whereas, the Henry County Fire Rescue Department began as a volunteer fire company of local community members who came together on their own time to serve the county in order to protect life and property, just as societies have done for thousands of years. And whereas, over the last five decades, thanks to those early volunteers, along with the foresight of county leaders and careful and thoughtful planning, Henry County Fire Rescue has evolved into a professional career department that provides service to more than two hundred and fifty thousand residents. And whereas, today's fire professionals honor those early volunteer firefighters who helped lay the foundation for the success of Henry County Fire Rescue in its mission to provide safe, professional service through education, prevention, emergency services, and community relations. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of Chair Carlotta Harrell, Vice Chair Johnny Wilson, and Commissioners Neet Robinson, DeAngelo the Third, Michael Price, and Kevin Lewis, that Henry County officially recognizes the dedicated men and women in our county's history who served as volunteers to protect the community. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners extends its sincerest gratitude to all of those volunteers who paved the way for today's Henry County Fire Rescue and offers thanks and gratitude to our current public safety professionals who continue to carry the torch of service, this seventeenth day of September, twenty twenty four. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Burnett. Next, we will have recognizing September as National Service Dog Month.
Good evening again Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners. Tonight, we have a proclamation recognizing September as National Service Dog Month, twenty twenty four. Whereas, since two thousand nine, September has been designated as National Service Dog Month to recognize the important work of service dogs throughout the county, country, and to raise awareness about the important role trained service dogs play for those who need them. And whereas, service dogs perform a myriad of services, including as guide dogs for those who are visually impaired and who are deaf or hearing impaired, as well as for those with mobility and other physical disabilities, including but not limited to assisting people with seizures, autism, PTSD, anxiety, just to name a few. And whereas, agencies such as Canine Companions, a nonprofit organization, enhances the lives of people with disabilities by providing expertly trained service dogs and ongoing support, exemplifying the transformative power of the human-canine-human bond. Whereas, expertly trained service dogs empower people with disabilities to lead life with greater independence, support, and companionship. And whereas, National Service Dog Month aims to educate the community about the benefits of service dogs and the importance of laws protecting them. And whereas, Henry County supports being an inclusive community about the benefits of service dogs and the importance of the laws and encourages a committee for all residents and their service dogs to be embraced and valued. Now therefore, in recognition of service dogs and the valuable and life-changing service they provide, the Henry County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of Chair Carlotta Harrell, Vice Chair Johnny Wilson, Commissioners Neet Robinson, DeAngelo the Third, Michael Price, and Kevin Lewis, proclaim September, twenty twenty four, as National Service Dog Month, and they encourage all residents to celebrate the important contributions of service dogs and be respectful of the rights afforded to the adults, children, and veterans who lead more independent lives because of their canine companions, this seventeenth day of September, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. And the last proclamation will be a proclamation recognizing the month of September as National Senior Citizens Month.
Okay. So this is a proclamation in recognition of National Senior Center Month, twenty twenty four. Whereas, older Americans are significant and valued members of our society, sharing their time, wisdom, and experience to help enrich and strengthen our community. And senior centers act as a meeting place where seniors are able to socialize, participate in activities, and share experiences. And whereas, Henry County senior centers, including Bear Creek, Heritage, Hidden Valley, and Locust Grove, have acted as catalysts for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older generation of Henry County. And whereas, through a wide range of services, programs, and activities, senior centers empower older Americans to contribute to their own health and well-being, as well as the betterment of their communities. And whereas, senior centers fill an important function at community, our community partners in ensuring that older adults in our community are able to stay connected, safe, and healthy. And whereas, Henry County's four senior centers and their dedicated staff affirm the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping into their experiences, skills, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to the community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of Chair Carlotta Harrell, Vice Chair Johnny Wilson, and Commissioners Neet Robinson, DeAngelo the Third, Michael Price, and Kevin J. Lewis, recognize September, twenty twenty four, as National Senior Center Month, and call upon all residents to recognize the special contributions of the senior center participants and the special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well-being of the senior members of our community, this seventeenth day of September, twenty twenty four.
Great, thank you so much. So we'll begin, uh, our first, uh, set of pictures with, uh, those that are here to accept the proclamation for the Hispanic Heritage Month. And Stephanie, will you just go down the list as we, um...
Thank you. Okay, now I have individuals come up for the National Senior Center Month.
We have some of that too. Next item on the agenda is appointments. Uh, reappointment to the Department of Family and Children's Services, Catherine Rutledge, for a term of five years, beginning September fifth, twenty twenty four, to September fifth of twenty twenty nine. Can I get a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Can I get a second? Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is McIntosh Trail appointments. Katie Lonsford is the Director of Peatmont Henry's Emergency Department and Judge Danielle Roberts from Henry County Superior Court, for a term of three years, beginning nine seventeen, twenty twenty four, through nine seventeen, twenty twenty seven. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the appointments.
I'm moving to approve both appointments.
Okay, got a motion, is there a second? Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. We have our county manager, Sherri Matthews, to please come forward and read our consent agenda.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Board. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty four, six thirty P. M. Under the Department of Transportation, we have a resolution awarding bid number twenty five dash one zero for the purchase of plant-mix asphalt for the Henry County Department of Transportation. Under Parks and Recreation, we have a resolution awarding RFQ number twenty five dash oh one to the Johnson C. Park Association, LLC, for Parks and Recreation umpires and officials for a one-year contract with two additional one-year renewals. We also have a resolution authorizing an application submission to the USTA Tennis Venue Services Grant to be utilized for resurfacing of courts at Richard Craig Park. Under the Police Department, we have a resolution approving a purchase of radio equipment from Loud Communications, Inc., to outfit fifteen vehicles currently operated by Henry County Police Department School Resource Officer Division in the amount of a hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars, utilizing capital funds and receiving a full reimbursement from the Board of Education. Under SPOS, we have a resolution approving the Henry County Water Authority's utility relocation estimated cost of night drive in the amount of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars. We also have a resolution approving the Snapping Shoals EMC utility relocation estimated cost for night drive utilizing SPOS four funds in the amount of fifteen thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars. It is located in Old District Four, currently in District Three. Under Stormwater, we have a resolution to approve the recycling center fee increase. And then under Technology Services, we have a resolution authorizing the recycling of technology surplus items and equipment. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Are there any questions, uh, from any of the Board members regarding the consent agenda? Here and now, can I get a motion to approve?
Sir.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And now we move to our regular agenda, transportation planning. Uh, we have a resolution to approve a contract and a bid. If we could have our transportation planning director, Sam Baker, to please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and pillars of the community. Thank you, Madam Chair, for this opportunity to come before this Board. I want to take this opportunity to draw your and the community's attention to Henry County's recent crash statistics. Please take a moment and take a look at this recent, recent crash statistics. What do you see? Let me tell you what I see. I see a rising trend in the number of crashes, injuries, fatalities, truck-involved accidents, hit-and-runs, property damages, and so on. If done nothing, I expect that these numbers will keep going up and up, year after year. I think our first step should be to recognize and acknowledge from this rising trend that we have a community problem. Then we can discuss what should we do about it. Looking at these rising numbers, Henry County applied for a federal discretionary grant. This grant is called Safe Streets and Roads for All Planning and Demonstration Grant. In short, SS number four A Planning Grant. This planning grant, uh, we, Henry County, has been awarded by the U.S. Department of Transportation for two hundred thousand dollars to, uh, develop a city-county joint comprehensive safety action plan. This plan will establish a Vision Zero goal of zero death and zero serious injury by a future date yet to be established. Then we, it will come up with a prioritized list of road safety improvement projects so that we can begin to reverse the trend, this upward trend of number of crashes and injuries and deaths. So that even if something happens on Henry County roads, uh, they are not as fatal, they don't cause as many injuries. Now this, uh, grant requires a twenty percent local match, and that local match is in the fiscal year twenty twenty five budget of the Henry County Department of Transportation Planning. Upon receiving this grant, uh, we solicited proposals from consultants to develop this, uh, comprehensive safety action plan. We received three proposals. We received three proposals and a, an evaluation committee selected Modern Mobility Partners, LLC, to develop this plan for $245,000, which scored the highest. We also invited all four of our municipalities, Stockbridge, McDonough, Locust Grove, and Hampton, to partner with us in the development of the city-county joint safety action plan. To date, the City of McDonough and the City of Locust Grove have expressed their interest in partnering with us and sharing the local cost. We have not heard from the City of Stockbridge and City of Hampton, so I want to take this opportunity to extend the invitation again to those two cities that have not yet joined us. Here is an incentive to join. Without this safety action plan, setting a Vision Zero goal, Henry County and its four municipalities do not qualify for any federal safety improvement implementation grants. Put simply, no plan, no implementation money from the feds. So that's, is a good reason to join Henry County in the development of this plan, and it's a bargain for just shares, sharing the 20% local match, which comes to less than $10,000. All five local governments can have a safety action plan so that we can tackle our, our crash numbers and also potentially qualify for future implementation grants. With that said, I conclude my presentation, and staff suggest that you rec, you approve our entering into a contract with Modern Mobility Partners to develop the comprehensive safety action plan.
Are there any questions from the Board? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Next item?
Thank you, sir.
Should I stay?
Okay, thank you.
Henry County has been awarded an $825,000 SMART grant by the US Department of Transportation to deploy and test connected vehicle technology in Henry County. Those who don't know, this technology allows a vehicle to send a signal to a traffic light and change it from red to green, and thus pass through a very busy tran, intersection faster. And we are deploying this technology in Henry County Fire Department Emergency Response Vehicles so that they can respond to emergencies in less time and can potentially save lives and property. So one of the, our SMART grant projects is the purchase and installation of onboard units for our emergency response vehicles. So we plan to buy 45 such onboard units and install them in our fire department vehicles. We solicited bids from contractors and received three bids. The one from Sonomo Incorporated was the lowest, for $168,882.78. The SMART grant will cover the entire cost of purchase and installation with no cost to Henry County. Staff recommends your approval of the entering into a contract with Sonomo to purchase the units and installation. Any questions?
Are there any questions from the Board? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
No, got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Sam, great presentation. Next, we'll have SPOS Resolution approving a budget to amend the bid for award for sidewalks in Fairview.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and pillars of Henry County. As you can see on the overhead, that's a, that's a view of Fairview Road where the sidewalks are going to be hopefully installed here pretty soon. It's about 1.6 miles on each side, so you're looking at about 3.2 miles of sidewalks, eight foot wide, so it's going to be a multi-use sidewalk. And one of the good things about this sidewalk, it connects the park, Village Park, all the way to the county line with the cap county line. There's a lot of subdivisions in the area, so they will benefit from having this sidewalk going all the way to the park. Not only to that park, because it also connects to the Fairview Road that is already widened and it takes you all the way to United Park. So, and then in the future, of course, we have plans to do two more segments of Fairview, so you'll be able to go all the way from the cap county line all the way to Panola State Park. So, kind of just give you an overview of where the project is located. This is a SPOS IV project. Six sealed bids were received and reviewed by Purchasing Department per bid number 25-05. Sole Construction, LLC, provided the low bidder of $4,895,231.50. Budget amendment is needed in the amount of $3,318,826.68 to be able to, for construction, testing, project management for the project. Funding is available in the SPOS IV collections, and I will take any questions at this moment.
Okay, are there any questions from the Board? Okay, I know Commissioner Robinson, this is in your district. You have any comments or questions?
Yes, thank you, Rocky, so much for this. That community is, is super excited for this to take place. Wish it can happen tomorrow, but it's long overdue. But thank you so much for your due diligence to push this forward, because as we stated, we're trying to make this, hopefully in the future, so golf carts can move around and about in the community. But if not, they will be able to go from the different parks and move about within that community instead of just getting cars to be able to do that. So there's great things coming to the area. And Madam Chair, if there's no questions, I would like to make a motion to approve.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, if there's no further questions, all in favor. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving a budget amendment for, I guess it was the, is District Three, Old District Four, for night drive. Rocky?
Yes, Madam Chair. Night Drive is a, is a, big portion of Night Drive is a dirt road, and it's between State Route 155 and Crumley Road. This is a SPOS IV project, and it's about almost .4 of a mile of road. And that's a kind of overview of the location between State Route 155 and Crumley. As I mentioned, Night Drive is a SPOS, approved SPOS IV project. 10 sealed bids were received and reviewed by the Purchasing Department. Bid number 25-06. Right Grading provided the low bid of $1,265,481.55. A budget amendment in the amount of $1,142,702.89 will be needed to cover the construction, testing, and project management for the construction of Night Drive. As you can see, the following is a budget amendment that will be required as well, and this is where we show where the funding will be coming from. I'm not going to read all those numbers, you can see it on the screen, just for a matter of time.
Okay, alright.
And if everything approved, we can go ahead and start working on, on the night drive.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions from the Board? Hearing none, this is in your district, correct? Your old district, so it is Commissioner Anglin's district now.
Correct.
Well, this redistricting, everybody's districts have changed. So I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Community Development Block Grant. This is a public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of approval of the proposed FY 2023 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, Authorization of Execution and Submission of the Report to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, better known as HUD. And we will have Ms. Raven to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. This is a public hearing to receive public comment on our FY 2023 CAPER. So the CAPER is a requirement of the US Department of Housing and Urban Development for the CDBG program and Home Investment Partnership Program. The CAPER allows the community and HUD to review the department's progress on different projects and achievement of specific objectives and goals. The CAPER was put on, put out for public review starting August 24th, 2024. So within the CAPER, we detail different goals and objectives that we've reached for the year. So for single housing family, single-family housing rehab, we were able to assist 18 households in public service activities. That's CDBG funds and our CDBGCV funds, our COVID dollars. We were able to assist 2,224 individuals. And with public housing modernization with the McDonough Public Housing Authority, we were able to assist 24 households. So in total, we were able to expend a little over $1.3 million for the year. Now with our, as you can see on there, it has our home program. Those programs are still in development, and we should see some progress with those soon. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there any questions from the Board? So this is a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone that has any comments with regards to the report that was posted back in August for public comments? Okay, hearing none, this concludes the public hearing, and I'd like to ask for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Raven. Next item on the agenda is RZ 23-14. This is not a public hearing. The Revive Land Group, LLC of Atlanta. And we have Mr. Kenta from our Planning and Zoning Department that will be presenting.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, citizens of Henry County and pillars of the community. The item before you is a property located at the northeast corner of Franklin Rivers Road and Highway 1941. Property is currently zoned RA residential agricultural, and the request before you is to rezone the subject property from RA to RM multifamily residential. In your exhibit books is, and on the overhead screen is a highlighted area of the map that shows the subject property. As again, the property is zoned RA residential agricultural with a future land use map designation of low-density mixed use, supporting up to eight dwelling units per acre net. This low-density mixed use is intended to support lower-intensity mixed-use developments and can include housing, commercial, and office developments. At the time of the staff report for zoning advisory board, these were some of the existing developments in the, excuse me, of the area, of, one of which, item two, is no longer, that request was denied by the Board of Commissioners. Again, this is from staff report at zoning advisory board. But here are some comments that we've received from various departments as staff evaluated the request. Comments from Water and Sewer Authority, Transportation Planning, DOT, also the state DOT, GDOT, School Board, and Public Safety. This is the conceptual site plan that was originally submitted by the applicant indicating 145 townhome units. And here are some of those elevations that were, again, submitted originally by that applicant. The request has since changed. We have now an updated site plan which shows completely detached product, 85 units. So went from 145 townhomes to the detached 85 units. The development, this is a conceptual site plan in nature, and will need to meet all development standards at the time of permitting, which does include the RM zoning district requirements as well as the cluster home standards in our, in our Section 404.04, if I'm not mistaken. And with this new detached product and site plan, we do have new elevations for some of these homes. They're, these are just a sample of homes. An extended list is included in the staff report that was published. So the applicant, again, is requesting to rezone the subject property from RA to RM for that fee simple detached cluster home product with 85 lots, as indicated on that site plan. The property is within the boundaries of the highway corridor overlay district, and we need to comply with those standards therein. This is just showing the site plan once again. Development would be required to comply with the cluster home standards within our code section, as well as a 2045 comp plan that does call for low-density mixed use in this area, supporting up to that eight dwelling units per acre. The proposed density with this plan is 4.85 dwelling units per net acre. On January 11th of this year, the zoning advisory board did recommend an approval of the applicant's request to rezone from RA to RM with conditions. I do want to make note that we did have the public hearing for this request on June 25th. This is not a public hearing, which, which you did mention. And I did also want to be clear that since the zoning advisory board meeting, staff received this new site plan with the 85 lots. But staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request with these conditions for a total of 16, if I'm not mistaken, yes, 16. Thank you so much, happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Kenta, and as part of the conditions, the houses that were shown in this is part of the conditions?
That is correct. Condition seven and condition eight specifically make mention of Exhibit A, the site plan, and Exhibit B, those elevations.
Okay, alright, Commissioner Lewis, this is your district.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. As you stated before, we did have a previous public hearing on this matter. As you originally stated, this was subject to approval or was met with approval by the zoning advisory board earlier this year. However, when the elevations in the site plan were brought to the Board of Commissioners, and specifically me, I did mandate that we have some changes to the site plan. I thought that the 145 townhomes was too much for that area. And so the applicant, and I'd say thank you to them, they subsequently changed it down to 85 single-family detached homes, changed the elevations, which you have seen, made sure that we had a 5% rental cap, which is what we're trying to go to across the board in our developments. And, and this, to me, is a, is a much better site plan, much better overall product that will be given to residents of Henry County. So with that being said, unless there are any questions by the other Commissioners, I do move to approve this project.
So got a motion for approval, unless there are any other questions? Commissioner Wilson? Commissioner Wilson, what's the width of your lots, your minimum width?
That is an excellent question. If I'm not mistaken... One moment. The minimum lot width, if I'm not mistaken, would be 45 feet with the cluster home section.
So what's the side setbacks?
Side setbacks, that would be a 10-foot separation, building separation, so five foot on each side.
So y'all allowing vinyl soffits and all on these houses?
The cluster home and multifamily section of our code has detailed material requirements. Off the top of my head, I don't recall what it says on soffits and eaves. I do know that that is a frequent condition that we have here at the board. If I had to guess, it was probably implemented in that code section when we wrote it up.
Okay, I just asking for, for the purpose of fires. One unit catches own fire, it's kind of a domino effect, so...
I'm sorry, Commissioner Wilson, what was that?
I said I was asking for fire conditions. Reason I was asking the question is because they're 10-foot apart. One unit catches on fire, it could cause several other units to catch on fire. That's the reason I was asking the question.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you. Do we have a copy of the cluster home ordinance?
I do, yes.
Okay.
So that starts Section 40405C, as in CAT. Yes, so going down to three, four there, side dirt setback, five feet, or building separation of 10 feet, lot width of 45.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then no other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
No, so moved.
So got a motion, is there a second? Motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? One opposed? Thank you, Kenta. Next item on the agenda is Templar Development Group, Jonesboro Road.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, and pillars of the community. The resoning request before you this evening is for property located at 3435 Jonesboro Road. This property is at the southwest corner of Jonesboro Road and Dutch Town Road, across from Gates from Pates Community. The property is currently zoned R2, single-family residence, and the applicant is requesting a rezoning to R5, single-family residence, for detached cluster home development. The subject property is highlighted in green on the map before you all this evening. The property is currently zoned R2. The area in the vicinity of the subject property consists of residential areas, including R3, single-family residences, and RA residential agricultural lots. This, the future land use designation of the subject property is medium-density, which supports up to four dwelling units per acre net. The slide before you all shows the numerous comments that we've received from the departments during plan review regarding infrastructure and public safety. The details of each department's comments can be found in your exhibit books. The slide before you shows the boundary survey of the property provided by the applicant. Above is the latest concept plan received by staff. The property would appear to be developable as presented. This site plan is conceptual in nature and will need to meet all of the development standards at the time of permitting. The next few slides show the elevations provided by the applicant for the proposed development. The subject property is zoned R2 sewer, single-family residence, as illustrated on the Henry County zoning map. On November 13th, 2014, the Henry County Board of Commissioners denied the applicant's rezoning request from RA residential agricultural to R3, single-family residential. But an alternative approval of R2, single-family residential was approved with conditions. The applicant is currently requesting a rezoning of 57.26 plus or minus acres from R2 to R5 for single-family cluster home development. The proposed development will consist of 150 fee simple lots with a density of four dwelling units per net, per acre net. The applicant is proposing a minimum lot size of 4,750 square feet with an average lot size of 10,890 square feet. The future land use map designation for the subject property is medium-density, which will support the rezoning request to R5. I would also like to note that the property is located within the Highway Corridor Overlay District and would be required to meet the standards therein. The development shall also meet the horizontal multifamily standards therein. On July 11th, 2024, the zoning advisory board recommended approval of the rezoning from R2, single-family residence, to R5, single-family residence with the following conditions. Staff has since made changes to the conditions. Please see the conditions highlighted in red under infrastructure. We have removed number seven and added condition eight, as shown on the screen. At this time, I'll take any questions you may have.
Can you go back to the slide with regards to the school board?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the, um... Other item was, can you go back to the slide with the conditions?
Yes, ma'am.
Go to the next slide, I think I'm looking for... Next slide. Is this a gated community?
Yes, there will be a fence on the, along Jonesboro Road and Dutch Town Road, and several of the south to the adjacent properties there.
So is this a gated community?
There will be a fence on the outside, but I don't believe that the community will be gated.
It's not gated.
Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. The public hearing persons wishing to speak in favor of the request, including applicant, will have a collective total of 10 minutes to address the board.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Chairman of the Board, Deputy Director of the Department of Commerce, Lieutenant 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 of the Department of Commerce, and Detective Lieutenant of the Department of Justice, Lieutenant of the Department of Judiciary, and Detective Lieutenant of the Department of Judiciary, and Detective Lieutenant of the Department of Justice, and Detective Lieutenant of the Department of Judiciary, and Detective Lieutenant of the Department of Justice, 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 and again, as Taylor mentioned, the medium-density that we're proposing supports up to four units to the acre. This is the existing aerial photo of the property. As you can see, there's a couple of lakes, very well manicured landscaping that surrounded this, this residence, as well as an existing vegetated established buffer along the common property line with the traditions at Crystal Lake. And that buffer is proposed to be, proposed to remain as part of our plan. We are proposing 150 units. These will be owner-occupied units consisting of one-story, two-story, single-family residential detached units. The lots are, as proposed in condition, of average lot size of a quarter of an acre as part of this layout. And we feel like we've offered a good variety of housing options for the surrounding area, something that's a little unique and a little different. We think that this community is going to be ideal for people who are looking for a low-maintenance living opportunity, young professionals, college-educated, higher-income earners, people wanting convenient access to local retail, to the interstate, empty-nester retirees, and that type. Again, just to offer some variety. And here's some renderings that we've put together of the actual subdivision community. This is the entrance that is proposed to Jonesboro Road. And again, that would feature brick monumentation, entrance signage, divided median with the wrought iron fencing that would match the existing communities that are up and down Jonesboro Road. And then picture of the monument sign, obviously, as Taylor mentioned, we're in the Highway Overlay District, so it would have the enlarged sidewalk and pedestrian lighting along Jonesboro Road. So there is an existing lake that is very beautiful, very well manicured and maintained on the property. We intend to keep that and incorporate that into the community as, as an amenity center, even adding the water feature inside of that lake. This, as, at, at the lake, we proposed an amenity area that would consist of two pickleball courts and an open-air pavilion, as well as a, a community playground. We've also proposed two interior pocket parks throughout the community. The subdivision's been kind of intentionally designed to incorporate these large grass median, landscape medians at the north end and the south end of the project, just to break up the asphalt and provide just some additional meeting space and that type of amenity. So we've proposed buffer, significant landscape buffers around the perimeter of the property. Those buffers, in, in combination with the existing lake and some of the other open-space areas, comprises of 23 acres, which is roughly 40% of the total site that would be preserved in conservation and landscape areas. So the architecture is something that I'm really proud to be able to present tonight because it's different and unique than what I know you guys have seen on a lot of cases. The applicant has researched and sent their architects to the outside of the Atlanta area to come up with some plans that are different. These, their architect based these on some communities in Nashville, Tennessee. And I'll just flip through these, but just a, a unique, kind of different approach to what you're accustomed to see in some of these communities. A lot of, you know, exaggerated roof pitches, building materials, and again, several of these units will be master on main, single-story construction, as well as two-story construction. And then these are just some, some streetscapes throughout the community. And again, that's one of the areas, just trying to emphasize some of the street appeal that was taken into consideration as we were designing this community. And hopefully this is going to work. Let me get back to this and see how to get this video started. And this is the video, and again, this is based on the actual site plan. This is a drive-through video of the community, just to hopefully give you a flavor of what this will look like once it is constructed. This is the open, one of the park areas that's at the, at the northern end of the project. These will be ranging 1,800-square-foot homes with a master on main, up to 2,200-square-foot for the two-story product. Estimate these homes to start in the low $500,000 range. But I noticed the zoning condition about the variety and the not replicating the, the building products and not just flip the garage to say that's a different product, and that was taken into consideration as we put this development together. Again, this is the existing lake, is a beautiful lake. It's already features paved trails throughout there, so we're going to enhance those and, again, incorporate that into the community. So that is Adagio. The prob, the property has a existing house. You can see it kind of faded out in that aerial photo right now, very large home, about 13,000 square feet, that was built about 40 years ago. And it's currently unoccupied and is in need of desperate repair. And the truth of the matter is, there's just not a market for that, for somebody to buy that big giant house and live on that piece of property anymore. And so that home's been vacant for nearly 10 years. During this period, obviously, all the surrounding areas have fully developed out into communities similar to what we're proposing. So we've tried to incorporate as many of those improvements that were made to that property into our development plan. And we think we've come up with the best use of that property, given its nature and given the surrounding areas. We understand and we're thankful to have zoning advisory board's approval of, recommendation of approval of this, and staff's recommendation as well. We've read through the conditions, and they're acceptable to us. And at this point, or whenever it's my time, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wanting to speak in support of this project? Next, we will have, if there is anyone that wants to speak in opposition of this particular project, please come forward. You have a collective total of 10 minutes to speak, and it is regarding this particular property or project. Come on forward and state your name. And where you live.
Good evening, Board. My name is Olive West. My address is 3364 Alhambro Circle. I am owner at the Crystal Lake Village, which would be directly next to this property. A few of my questions are, the gentleman stated that for the one-story homes, we're looking at 1,800 square feet, and for two-story homes, we're looking at 2,200 square feet. He also stated that these homes would be comparable to what's in the neighboring communities. Both neighboring communities on each side of that community are four-sided brick. I'm not sure how that's comparable. The property across the street, which the young lady mentioned, the gates at Pates Creek, are one-sided brick, which is the front. Those homes are selling brand-new construction at $144 per square foot. Based on the numbers that he just provided, these homes would be sold at $220 per square foot. I'm not sure how that would be comparable because the homes across the street are continuously receiving price reductions. Now, there is a real estate agent on your board, so I'm more certain they can explain the difference between a new construction, the price reductions, and asking... the price reductions, and asking for a hundred dollars more per square foot with less amenities. A lawn in the front, I'm sorry, a pond in the front yard does not substantiate a hundred-dollar increase per square foot. These people across the street have a front, brick front. The people beside it have four-sided bricks. Our minimum in our subdivision is less, I'm sorry, is more than what their minimum is. Our homes there, the minimum is twenty-one-hundred square feet. That's for a one-story property. I own one of those one-story properties. And the minimum, I have one of the smallest homes there, and that's twenty-one-hundred square feet as a one-story. I also own an additional home in that property, which is thirty-eight-hundred square feet. So, I'm not really seeing the connection when he mentions how they are comparable and what comparisons are he, is he comparing this to? Is he comparing it to the development that's on the other side of Traditions, which this developer also owns and is in developing? So, is he comparing it to his own products? I, I just don't see how this is comparable and how the numbers work. And also, they mentioned that the transportation would be extending, the widening the road of Jonesboro Road from that property to nineteen forty-one. But part of his selling point was that it's going to be equally better for people to get to the highway. You're widening the highway in the opposite direction of what you're saying your plan works for. In addition to that, the education, they said that they would need additional school classrooms. They also mentioned that there's basically trailers that are being used for classrooms right now. That does not tell me that this school can hold the amount of people that this developer is trying to bring into this community. And that's just this one development. They also have another development, two communities down. So, I'm not seeing how those numbers are going to work for the transportation, for the students, for the education, and the space for these children in these classrooms, and for the roadside.
Thank you. What's your name again, ma'am?
Ms. West.
Oliver West, A-L-L-A-H-V-A-W-E-S-T.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Courtney Wright. I actually live at the Traditions. The neighborhood immediately to the west, as a matter of fact, my home is actually on that picture. I'm just curious. So, I know that there's what I refer to as the mansion right next door. Does that mean that that home is being demoed? Yeah, forgive me for missing the zoning advisory board meeting that happened back in June, but I was just curious about that at that time, what's going to happen with that home that's actually there? And in terms of it actually being unoccupied for ten years. Now, I've lived in my home, like I said, the Traditions, which is immediately to the west. I've only been in that home for three years, right? I've actually seen trucks, sometimes people, the lawn is actually being cut. Now, that doesn't mean that what we've been told is wrong. I'm just saying I don't understand how it would actually be unoccupied for ten years when it's being maintained that way.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Opposition?
Oliver West, again, thirty-one forty-two and thirty-three sixty-four Alhumber Circle. Another thing that was concerning to me was you continue to ask this young lady, is the property vacant? That answer has not been, that question has not been answered by this young lady or the developer. In addition to the accommodations that will need to be made for this one community, the last time they came back, there were some revisions made to their plan. And of course, this is, this is government. We have to go somewhere. We are growing families. We, we're not just sitting here. People are still having children. So, I'm not a hundred percent opposed to growing the community. However, grow it where it's going to work for everyone. I pay Henry County sixteen thousand dollars in taxes a year for two properties in this one development. I think that the, the property taxes continue to rise and we continue to get properties that are being put up that are not equal to what we have around us. And people like myself who have the four-sided bricks, who have HOAs that literally measure the, the size and the inches of our grass. I think that when you put these types of properties next to ours, that brings down, and it may not bring down the value, but it brings down the vision. It brings down the visual aspects of what we have built over these last few years. This gentleman says that he's been there for three years. I've been in Henry County in that subdivision for eleven years. I have seen the changes. I have seen the growth. I'm a licensed real estate agent, so I understand. Trust me, I would probably sell one of those homes, just like I've sold one across the street. You can't beat development. However, do it the correct way. With him saying that he's going to put four properties on one acre, the properties next to them are most, many of them are the, are, I'm sorry, above maybe point four of an acre. So, the fact that you're trying to put four homes where the neighboring communities have one to two homes in that same space, it just doesn't seem comparable. And I'm not sure why we continue to use this word comparable. Like I said, he's probably using comps from his other development, but what he's trying to put there is not comparable. The fact that the siding is nowhere near, it is subhard to what is already there. The spacing on Henry County, on, I'm sorry, on Jonesboro Road in Henry County, the fact that you're promoting the growth going in the opposite direction of where most of the traffic is, it's just not working. We live there. We breathe this every single day. It does not work. We have, we live by a high school where many of these children are just getting out to drive. There are so many cars that I have gone out in the middle of the night because I've heard a bang that is in that intersection. And we now have made progress with getting a no-left turn from that street. We are making small steps in progress. And adding additional cars to this mayhem is not the answer. We're going to continue to see children wrapped around these gates at Crystal Lake Village and continue to be in the ditch.
Robert Kopeck. The only thing I see on this development, it's the same thing. Everything's, houses go right across. It doesn't compare to what's already existing. Not many amenities and too many home sites. I think we could do better. This is the best we got. We could do better. We should do better for the communities around it and our Henry County community. Thanks.
Mr. Moore?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you address some of the concerns?
I'm happy to. Yes, ma'am. So, there is, so the, the square footage minimums that I'm, or square footage that I listed were minimum square footage. We don't anticipate to be the minimum. That is what we've proposed as a minimum, just like every subdivision that gets zoned has a minimum that gets established. Crystal Lake Village, the minimum that was approved was eighteen-hundred square feet, consistent with what we've suggested for the single-story. The Traditions at Crystal Lake, the minimum was two-thousand square feet. And again, we've talked about twenty-two-hundred square feet for the two-story products. As far as lot size goes, the minimum lot size that was approved with Crystal Lake Village was ten-thousand square feet. Our average lot size is ten-thousand eight-hundred ninety square feet. The minimum lot size that was approved for the Traditions was twelve-thousand square feet. Again, we're almost eleven-thousand square feet, not too far off from what is around us. And the truth of the matter, as far as prices go, is there is, I mean, everybody knows that building costs have gone up exponentially. That is, this builder, that's his business, is to build houses and to sell them. And he knows what it costs to build. He knows what, what's going to sell. And that's the, based on the quality of the construction, that's the price that they have set and that they intend to market this by. As it relates to road improvements, just one of the conditions is to contribute to, towards the construction and widening and improvement of Dutch Town Road, which the applicant has agreed to do. Further, there is a, a condition that was added when, when Taylor displayed those earlier that gave DOT and SPOS the option of eliminating, if they saw that it would benefit the transportation network, to eliminate the access to Jonesboro Road and replace, and just have the two access points to Dutch Town Road, which we're fine with and will just defer to their wisdom and judgment as they see fit, given just the surrounding area and the vehicular trips that are on those roads. So, hopefully, as far as the house goes, it's our understanding that the house has been vacant. That's what we were told by the seller of the house. It doesn't surprise me that they maintain it because it's a beautiful piece of property and it deserves to be maintained. I don't know that anyone's living in that house. And things could have changed since, since we started this process. Don't know if they have family that stays there occasionally. I don't know the details, but we were of the opinion that it was a vacant house and there is not a demand, again, for that fifteen, fourteen-thousand square foot residential structure. Nobody's willing to buy it for a house. And so, again, we felt like with the surrounding development patterns, this was a consistent, compatible, and appropriate use for the property.
Okay. Well, we do have code enforcement and
Yes, ma'am.
people are responsible for maintaining their property, whether they live in it or not.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, otherwise, that they would be cited. I guess, county manager, I had a question with regards to, I know there was a comment made about taxes. And we would like for a lot of these people to show up at the school board because that's where your tax increase is coming from, is not coming from the county side. And so, we hear complaints all the time about taxes. And can you elaborate a little bit on that?
So, I believe the individual that came forward spoke to an increase in her property taxes. Yes, there was a property tax increase by the Board of Commissioners as it pertains to our special service districts. You will see, as a resident of the county, an increase to your taxes if your values go up on the school board side. Because there is a frozen exemption here in the county. Although your value goes up, the frozen exemption locks you in at your property value based on the time in which you purchased the property. And so, I'd be more than happy to speak with that homeowner, to look at that tax bill and to show where, year over year, if there was an increase in the value of the property, your greatest impact would have been on the mileage that's set forth by our school board because that frozen exemption is not applicable to the school board mileage rate.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to mention and circle back to the comment regarding the road widening of Jonesboro Road, that the condition number five, it should actually state that the developers should dedicate at least thirty feet of right-of-way along Jonesboro Road and not the center line. And I also would like to bring up the fact that, though I am not sure if the property will be gated, I believe Mr. Moore will be able to answer that question for you all.
The current proposal was, again, to match the hardscape and landscape along Jonesboro Road. We haven't planned to gate it. If that's something that this board feels like is appropriate, then, then we're willing to do that. As far as, and we're fine with the thirty feet. I, I actually thought that's what it's, that's what it was intended to communicate and it was just written up as from the center line of the road. But we're fine if it goes thirty feet from the, from the current right-of-way.
And what is our rule with regards to, because one of the things that I noticed, and I had her to go back to the screen, was about the, the statement from the, I guess, whatever you all got back from the school board. But that's not a reason to deny zoning, is it? County manager?
No, ma'am. So, zonings cannot be denied solely on schools having the capacity. One of the things that we do look at is the criteria points that are a part of your staff report. And on top of schools, you know, infrastructure, public safety, those are all things that can be considered. But schools could not be the sole reason why a rezoning request is denied.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I am not the attorney. I will certainly defer to the county attorney, but, but that is my understanding.
County attorney?
And the county manager is correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lewis, this is your district. You want to?
Yeah, do you have any more questions from the other?
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay.
Question?
Okay.
Yeah, thank you once again, Taylor. Thank you, Mr. Moore, and also Ms. West and Mr. Wright. We, we've gone back and forth with the developer for probably over a year now. And I did want to address some of the things that Mrs. West stated and also Mr. Wright. Mrs. West, about the, the school, I know they just completed the addition for Dutch Town High School. They are in, going to do the addition for Dutch Town Middle School as well. So, I did check with the school board to see what their plans were going forward. And they also are going to address the number of students at the middle school and also the elementary school. So, those, those plans are in the works. As far as the comparable, I think what I took from the comparable, when we had discussions, the comparable was actually talking more about the density with the neighboring subdivisions more so than the actual building materials. I know that's, that's a sticking point around that area. I actually live not too far from there myself, about the, the building materials. I know some of the homeowners around there prefer brick. We have some, some other homeowners who don't. So, it, it kind of gets into, you know, what do you actually, what does an individual like as far as what their house should like? One thing I did like about this particular development was that the builder actually tried something new. We've been going back and forth with a lot of developers who are trying to build in Henry County to say that we want, we don't want the cookie cutter anymore. We're tired of the cookie cutter subdivisions where every house looks alike, which is why we had stipulation in there that, you know, you know, between six houses, they can't have the same plan. We also asked the developer, go, you know, bring us something that looks different than what we currently have in the county. And so, I, I think they have done that, you know. And I do understand that people's tastes are different. I, I understand that. But, but what I looked at was, you know, does this match the density of the neighborhoods, you know, beside it? So, I did see that the density of Traditions, matter of fact, Traditions is really, you can see it on the, the other side, is, is literally going to be the same neighborhood flip-flop. It's just an adjacent property to look, you know, same, same type of design. Crystal Lake Village is actually more dense than, than this proposed development. So, I, I do take into consideration, you know, neighbors' concerns. That, that is what I'm here for. I'm here to listen to, to everybody's side. And I know generally, everybody can't get their way. Anyway, like I said, sticking point for me, I did want the community to be gated. So, I would like that written to the conditions that it be gated. Another point, I thought we had agreed, there would not be an entrance on Jonesboro Road. I know you've had conversations with our SPOS department and our DOT about, you know, thinking that it might be an overload on Dutch Town Road. But I think the way, can you, how, how was it written? How was it worded, that stipulation about Jonesboro Road?
This will be condition number eight, subject to review and approval by HC DOT and/or HC SPOS. The applicant may modify the site plan to eliminate the proposed access to Jonesboro Road so long as the two proposed access connections to Dutch Town Road are provided as shown on the conceptual site plan.
Okay, so my question is, so how, how, how is that going to be determined? So, when is that going to be determined? Who's going to determine if?
This will be determined with approval from the Department of Transportation and SPOS. And this will be before the site plan is modified.
Modified, okay. I got you.
If I may, the, one of the reasons for that was because there's a previous condition that requires it to be built according to the approved site plan. And what we didn't want is if Henry County DOT said, you know what? We don't want that entrance on Jonesboro Road. We didn't want to have to come back and get the site plan modified in front of this board and waste your time. So, we just wanted to cover our bases there. But we are fine moving both entrances if that's what Henry County DOT and SPOS suggest.
Got you. Got you duly noted. And, and one other thing I did like about the project is that the contribution to Dutch Town Road, and that's been one of my, something I've been working on for a long time, to make sure that Dutch Town Road gets built and this, this subdivision will actually contribute to the completion of Dutch Town Road, as long as another Lennar subdivision on Crystal, right behind Crystal Lake as well. So, with all that being said, I, I think that actually the developer did a, a pretty good job with what they have presented to us. And with that, I do move to approve the subdivision.
Okay, so we've got a motion to approve. Is there a second? We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here or none, all in favor? Those that oppose, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item is RZ twenty-four dash eleven. This is, wait a minute. Is that the right one? Is that the right one?
Twenty-four dash five.
Twenty-four for?
Okay, I'm sorry. Twenty, twenty-four dash zero five.
Good evening, once again, Chair, Vice Chair, Board members, citizens of Henry County, and pillars of the community. The item before you is property located at two fifty and three eighty-two Nail Road, currently zoned RA Residential Agricultural and shown on your exhibit books and on the overhead screen in that green area there. Future land use map designation for the subject property is partially medium density suburban, supporting up to four dwelling units per acre, with the majority designated as high density mixed, I'm sorry, high density suburban, supporting up to eight dwelling units per net acre. This is a conceptual site plan that was originally submitted by the applicant indicating a hundred and twenty-two units. That would be eighty townhome units and forty-two detached units with elevations, again, originally submitted by the applicant. These next few slides show an updated site plan and elevations for the proposed development. The new site plan shows a completely detached product with ninety-two lots meeting the standards of the RM zoning district, the multifamily development section, cluster homes more specifically. Site plan is conceptual in nature and would need to meet all development standards at the time of permitting. And these are the elevations, new elevations, I should say, that were submitted by the applicant. And again, these are just a, just a few sample elevations. Extended list is included with that resolution and staff report packet. This is a slide showing some existing developments within the area. And again, this was, this was conducted back with the zoning advisory board staff report. So a little bit outdated, but still just wanted to provide that information to you all. The applicant is requesting to rezone subject property from RA to R5 for the purpose of that fee simple detached cluster home product. Originally, again, it was proposed for the hundred and twenty-two lots, but they have since revised their site plan for the ninety-two lots. Development would need to comply with the multifamily section of our code. That future land use map designation, again, calls for medium density suburban, small portion with that designation supporting up to four dwelling units per acre, with that majority high density of, supporting up to eight. The proposed density with the new plan is three point eight eight dwelling units per net acre. And here are some comments that we received from various departments. And once again, that site plan there. On June thirteen, twenty twenty-four, the zoning advisory board did recommend denial of the applicant's request to rezone that subject property. Since that zoning advisory board meeting, the applicant provided that updated site plan showing the ninety-two lots. At the original time of zoning advisory board, staff did recommend approval of that request. We are recommending approval with this new site plan with the fifteen conditions shown on the screen. As a point of clarification, I did want to bring up condition five. There was a typo in that. We corrected that typo to, to match the ninety-two units that is being proposed with that new site plan. Similar to the previous request, we did condition the site plan and the elevations, Exhibit A and Exhibit B, and condition five and six there. Again, total condition number of fifteen. Thank you so much. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Not at this time. This is a public hearing. Persons wish to speak in favor of the request, including applicant, will have a collective total of ten minutes to address the board.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Neville Allison. I'm the managing partner of the Revive Land Group. It's my privilege to be here before you this evening. I just wanted to take our time, kind of go through the comprehensive plan, the future land use map, and as it relates to our proposal. I think this is a really good example of a developer doing his best to bring forward a plan and listen to the community concerns and adjust that plan accordingly. Have we made everyone in the room happy? I'm sure not. But I do want to kind of walk through those changes of our site plan of where we started and where we are today. Here's just an aerial of our, of our site. So this is the future land use map for the area. I think it's, lucky for us, we're coming behind a development that just was approved for R5 in a medium density future land use map area. If you look at our site, ninety, over ninety percent of our site is actually in the high density future land use map designation. I think it's important to note that the comprehensive plan is not something that is slapped together, is not something that is meant to be taken lightly. Each time you guys update that, every two years, it's a six-month process at least, three steering committee meetings, multiple community input, Board of Commissioner votes, public hearings, et cetera. And that's the designation for our site. You can see it's high density, up to eight units per acre, which is what drove our original proposal of a hundred and twenty-two lots, a combination of single-family homes and townhomes. We went before the ZAB with that plan, and we heard from the neighbors, we also heard from the ZAB, hey, this is too dense. I understand what the flume says, but it's not here yet. You know, that's not going to work. So that's why we adjusted our plan down to the ninety-two units with all single-family homes. This is straight from your comprehensive plan. For our area, you can see that medium density and high density suburban are the recommended uses. But of note, it also says that low-density suburban residential is only allowable if partial shapes and sizes preclude feasibility of other single-family residential and use types. And that's not the case here. So again, not only is medium density and high density appropriate, low density is not appropriate according to the comprehensive plan. Again, I've, I've read it cover to cover because they're very important to me, that we do our best to adhere to those. And you can see here on this page that I've circled, is that one of the comments was, development feels unpredictable. What's driving this? And there's a commentary on the deviation from the future land use plan that is frustrating everyone, the Board of Commissioners, stakeholders, and public citizens. There's a quote here and it says, many stakeholders have noted, why even do a plan if we don't follow it? And, you know, as I've mentioned, that's our guidebook as developers, is the comprehensive plan that the county puts forth. There's been a lot of discussion with the neighbors on the surrounding intensities of this. Not only what's the future land use map show, but what's on the ground today. And so I think this slide here shows our proximity there, we've got the yellow arrow, arrow, but then also all of those teal homes underneath us, that's the West Ridge subdivision. It's four hundred and fifteen lots that's developed at about two point six units per acre as, as cluster homes. I've also taken some red polygons there, and those are already zoned, high-density PUDs, two of which are in the city of McDonough and coming through the market right now at seven to eight units per acre. Those, again, you know, on, on Nail Road. There's been some discussion with some of the neighbors, I just use this as an example. There's a big, beautiful house to the southeast of us that I put a green circle around. That green circle represents a seven hundred foot radius. We do not have any homes within seven hundred feet of the center of that house. But I wanted to point out that there are twenty-six existing cluster homes within that seven hundred feet surrounding that house. Again, showing the character area of what's already there today. There's been some discussion, again, we had a great neighborhood meeting where we presented our, our plan and our idea and also got neighborhood feedback back on September eleventh. And the neighbors gave us the greatest thing they can is, they told us exactly what they want. The quote was, we don't want anything. We would like this property to remain RA. If it can't remain RA, we'd like it to be R2, which with approximately thirty lots. So that's less than one unit per acre, half-acre lots, one-acre lots. You guys know the math. We've talked about high construction and development costs. If you look at resales in this submarket, excuse me, new home sales in this submarket, you can see the market just drops off above five hundred thousand. I think there were four homes that sold in the last twelve months above five hundred thousand in this school district. This is a quick snapshot of the homes that have sold. Some of the folks, you know, the big objection is, hey, we live on a large lot. We don't want you to hurt our property values with a new subdivision. Well, you can see actually, some of these large lot comps around us have sold in the low three hundreds. And that's because most of them are, I don't want to say most, but many of them are lower square footage, eighteen hundred square feet, twenty-plus-year-old product, and that's what it's selling for. Our price point's going to start in the high three hundreds and run through the fours. You can see this is just a quick site plan history. We started, the flume would allow two hundred and ninety-three lots on this site. We designed it with a hundred and seventy-two. We went to ZAB with a hundred and twenty-two. And currently, we have ninety-two units, which is a gross of two point four units per acre. Again, citing the project that was just approved five minutes ago, that was in the medium category of the future land use map, and it was approved at two point six units per acre, a higher density than what we're proposing. This is our site plan. We've got a highly amenitized development with a pool, cabana, totlot, and dog park. This is a more detailed site plan that, again, shows our current layout of the lots, some digital renderings of the amenity, resort style, very Class A. And then, again, we had a great meeting with some of the stakeholders in Henry County and heard the feedback that I think a lot of developers are going to be hearing, and that's, hey, we don't want to see any more cookie cutter houses. You saw staff put up the elevations that we had originally proposed. They are product that we build throughout Atlanta. And, you know, we got the pushback of, hey, that's not what we want. Try harder, do better. And so we went through probably fifty different elevations, going through different styles, and we landed on this kind of elevated, modern farmhouse look. It's got higher-end finishes, decorative garage doors, some Corbels, Borden Batten, again, just kind of really elevating and building something different than what has been built existing in Henry County. So with that, I think I'm going to save the rest of my time and answer any questions you guys have. And I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Anyone wishing to come and speak in favor of this particular project, please come forward. If there is anyone here wishing to speak in opposition of this project, please come forward, state your name and address. And you have a total collective time of ten minutes to speak.
Thank you. My name's Kevin Maddox. I live in, at two thirty Nail Road, McDonough. The biggest thing about this is the impact to our neighbors. We all have two, five, seventeen acres around what's proposed to us. And we're not liking it at all. Talk about cars, a hundred and eighty-four cars, that's two cars per household on our Nail Road, which is already getting the influx of traffic from Highway twenty and the other end of our street, and also Alexander Road off eighty-one. So we're getting a lot of traffic and semis down our road already. Where I am at, I'll have nine houses facing my property, the back of their houses facing my property. And I'll have five more houses on the back of my property facing my property with their backyard. So there goes my privacy. I'm not alone. Everybody on that road is facing this, the impact of it. Noise pollution, it's going to get worse. And that's a concern of mine. I have a sick wife and I try to protect her, but if I can't get this to go away, or at least reduce it, I can't protect her. Okay. I want to know how many rental houses is going to be proposed in this, in this unit, units. Some of the other concerns is water runoff. How's that going to affect our property? Some of the other ones is, is it going to be a gated community? Because if not, I'm going to have everybody's backyard, if they have a dog or whatever, coming to me, or my other neighbors. Just a concern. It's a concern. The traffic impact is probably the biggest, or second we'll say, because of all the traffic that will be coming. And we're not just talking about the people that live there having two cars and going back and forth to work. We're talking about visitors and current traffic. And we're, like I said, we have two acres, seventeen acres. It's not a good fit the way they've got it right now. I'm not saying no build. You, you bought the property, you have the right to build. But the way they want to build it is not conducive for our community, the way it is right now. I mean, jeez, how, how would you like to have somebody build that next to your ten acres or five acres? How would you like that? It's, it's not a good feel. It's just, just not. And I, I hope and pray that, that you guys make a good decision on this for us. I'd appreciate that.
Can you state your name for me one more time?
Kevin Maddox.
Maddox, okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes. Does anybody else want to come up?
I'm David Andrews. You'll have to excuse me. I had four strokes in one week, two months ago.
Take your time, sir.
In our area, there's only two ways out of our neighborhood. And most of that was brought on by DOT because you've got to go to Hampton, toward Hampton, and make a U-turn and come back if you want to go to McDonough. It's very difficult to get out of that territory for us right now. Nail Road is like a little country road. It doesn't have gutters, it doesn't have sidewalks. It's just, you fall off, you fall off. It, it's really bad. The two ways that you can get out of them, one is right next to a school. And once they try that one time, they don't do that again. The other main way to get out is Alexander Road. And when it rains, the county comes out and they put out the sign, this road is closed because it's flooded. You know, they've, I've been there for ten years and I don't think they're going to ever, you know, fix that. Most of our homes that I see are on either two to five acres, some of them, you know, a little bit larger. I originally thought R1 would be, or the most, R2 might be okay, but they want to go all the way to R5 on, you know, the first try. I do see that they're going with ninety-two homes and, like he said, that figure's about a hundred and eighty-four cars, but you're not counting all the visitors that are going to come in there. They said the schools don't matter, but there is a lot, a lot of schools. But we have a severe lack of infrastructure. And of course, they're, they paid, I don't know how much money, to have the county put sewer in. And I went to the water department. I said, since you're doing this right across my street, can I finally get sewer? Oh, no, we're not planning on putting sewer up for y'all. It's just for them. I said, you've got to be kidding me. We have, still don't have any gas service. We have very little, you know, services out there. But our road will not carry that many cars. I was looking up definitions of these homes. It says overcrowding and potential environmental issues, overpopulation, pressure on the infrastructure. issues, overpopulation, pressure on the infrastructure, resources, and increased disease transmission. When you Google it, it does not sound very good. And my idea would be to build one really nice home on two acres, or two homes per acre, that'd be thirty nice homes. A lot of money, and, you know, those homes could be, you know, nice homes. That would make sense. But ninety-something of them in that little, oh, and they've got this little piece up here where it was one lot, it's been vacant for years. If you look, they're trying to put eight houses and a road to go out to Nail Road on that one little lot, that little straight piece up there. I was shocked when I saw that, that they thought that's their other version of getting in and out. Also, how much of it's going to be owner-occupied? Is it going to go to, you know, end up being rental property? Is there going to be an HOA? There's a million-dollar house just right to the left of that, you know, proposed area. I'm sure they love the thought of this. Thank you.
Sir, sir, what is, what is, what is your address?
One-fifty-two Nail Road. I'm right behind those three houses at the corner right there.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Connie Snow, and I live at four-twenty-six Chase Marion Way, McDonough, Georgia.
I'm sorry, what was the address?
Four-twenty-six Chase Marion Way, McDonough, Georgia. What I find interesting tonight is that there's five different developments on the agenda. In addition, this week, we have a couple more on the city of Stockbridge's agenda. We're going to keep cramming these developments in, and what you keep hearing from these citizens are echoes of statements of weak infrastructures, our schools struggling, and our property taxes climbing. A young lady mentioned earlier that our taxes are increasing because of the schools, but our school taxes are increasing due to the influx of the students, due to massive bills that are being approved rapidly in this county.
So are you opposed to this development?
Yes, I'm opposed to this development. I'm opposed to actually every development on the agenda tonight. I think at some point, we need to do smart growth, and we need to slow that development down, because if we don't, here's what's going to happen. Our kids are going to suffer, our schools are going to fail. Once our schools fail, our property value crashes. We currently are also talking about earlier tonight how some of the properties that are being built up are such high in cost that are crushing the citizens' current property values. That's happening to me as well in my area. I'm hoping that tonight that you guys quit accepting or approving all these builds so quickly and that you listen to your community, because we've all been up here multiple times, both at the city and the county, and we've expressed multiple times that we don't agree with this, but our leaders do. I have one more question. A gentleman earlier on this bill just mentioned the stakeholders for this build are okay with it. Who are those stakeholders? Oh, thank you.
My name's Victoria Gramlich. I live at two-oh-nine Nail Road. Mine's the house across from the properties.
So you actually live on Nail Road?
I actually live on Nail Road. I live at the, my, our property is the corner of Nell and Alexander.
So you're part of the community?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
The elementary school that, and I know that they said that school's not the only thing that impacts, but I, I'm an educator, so. Our, that elementary school has a twenty-three percent pass rate in English, a twenty percent rate pass rate in math, and a sixteen percent pass rate in science. They can't pass students at the rate that they're at right now. How are they going to be able to infrastructure and have the teachers and the staff there to support putting, if you put ninety-two homes, if you do the average, two kids per family moving in, you're talking a hundred-and-eighty-four kids approximately? There's that. We were also told, I know the time has expired, but we were told it would-
No, that's okay, go ahead.
We were told it would be a ten percent cap on rentals when we had our meeting with them, not five, like they proposed for the other community. We were also told, when asked about land size, we were told that that wouldn't matter. Yes, while there are much older homes in that area, because most of us have lived there or have had family that have lived there for forty, fifty, sixty years, these are generational homes. That's why they're still there, and the families are moving back out to them. He, the gentleman that came up here in favor of it, kept saying that, "Well, you just approved an R5 for over here, so I don't see why we can't do it over here." You're comparing apples and oranges when you talk about Jonesboro Road and Dutch Town and Nail Road and Alexander. While Dutch Town is still a pretty primitive road compared to Jonesboro Road, the one road that they back up to is one of our central roads in McDonough that is, that has been kept up, and it goes between place to place. So on that front, you can't not compare these two properties. Lastly, I've heard about the amenities. These amenities are not going to affect the neighbors that already live there. They're going to affect that community. So bringing them up, while great for a selling point, if that's where you want to live and that's what you want to do, what I've noticed in this area, and I have a house in Atlanta too, so, I moved out of Atlanta after COVID. Most of the people that are moving out want land, they don't want to come back to this teeny-tiny property. There's no buses, there's no way, there's no form of transportation to get anyone out of there. There's, like he said, there's no sidewalks. If something happens to somebody, if somebody's on that road, it is the middle of the night, you're going to get hit, because you don't, you can't see. It's literally an old country road. I don't understand why we would want to put ninety-two houses on an old country road, where basically the same people that have been living there for the past fifty years are still there now. Thank you.
Give me your name again, ma'am, ma'am.
Victoria Gramlich.
How you spell that last name?
G-R-A-M-L-I-C-H. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, dear.
Madam Chair, if, if you're going to allow additional speakers, the board will need to make a motion to extend the time so that we can keep with our public opinion policy.
Okay, all right.
Or, or, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, so the, the time has run out, but I'd like to get a motion to allow these last two speakers to speak. Okay. All in favor?
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you very much, and I appreciate what the county is doing here. And I'm, been, uh, my, my name is Bill McClair, and I live at three-fifty-five Oakland Road. And I just want to get started here, but I want to thank Kenta. I spent a good hour and a half with him, talking about this project, and also, sorry I missed this Zoom meeting. I heard it was, it was beneficial for some, some it wasn't very beneficial at all. But, that being said, I'm sorry I missed that, so I had to make up some time here, but I know we're running short on time. What's very concerning here, I'm at three-fifty-five Oakland Road, I'm on eleven-point-eight-five acres. My property is not contingent to this, to this project, but I'm only two-hundred feet. My property abuts Betty Ailer, who has, who's on Six Point, I think it's almost seven acres. My next-door neighbor is on eleven-point-eight-five acres also. So we're looking at, here we're getting a community here that, based on what I'm seeing here, they can only build on twenty-three acres. We're going to put ninety-two homes on twenty-three acres. Do you realize that I would have two homes in my, you know, on my, I'm at eleven-point-eight-five, twelve acres? So that would be, two homes should be allowed for that property. They're only on twenty-three acres to build. That's ninety-two homes. And also, the Planning and Zoning Board said that they would take recommendations from the Unified Land Development Code. Okay, let's look at that a minute. The minimum lot area is ten-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety square feet. They're proposing four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet. On the minimum lot with the United Land Development Code, seventy-five feet. They're, they're recommending forty-five feet. The minimum front yard setback, twenty-five feet, they're recommending twenty. The minimum side yard, ten feet, they're recommending five to ten feet. The minimum rear yard setback, twenty-five feet, they're recommending twenty feet. Maximum height, forty-five feet, they're good there. Now, this is the one that really bothers me. The minimum heated floor area that they're recommending, which is the United Land Development, again, eighteen-hundred square feet, they're recommending twelve-hundred square feet, six-hundred feet. And this is just the minimum, which is really not the density for the current land use plan. We're, they're talking future land use plan. We're talking current land use plan. So I think I've said enough of the points, but ninety-two homes on twenty-three acres that they can build on, way too many. I think we need to reconsider that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McClair. Next. Can you give me your name and address, please?
Bud Medley, at three-oh-seven Nail Road. I live right across the street from this property, would be between the two driveways, the entrance, one below me, and one to the right of me. We got so much traffic on this road now, it is pitiful. Not only we got the car traffic, few semis come through, I'm an old ex-drug driver myself, but we got, since they built that bicycle store up at West Ridge where Publix is at, it ain't nothing to say fifty to sixty bicycle people come through there. And when they on their run, cars are behind them and it just backs up. But my main thing is, my sister, she bought into a retirement village in Stockbridge. It's been a few years back, and it's like a dollhouse up there. Some of these pictures, these people showing us, well, my sister just, her place is up for sale, she's moved to Dallas. Over the years, some of the people died. This was a retirement like village, like they want to build, I'm talking about. And some went to nursing homes. So these houses started to sell. People bought them and started renting them out. My sister had a corner lot up there, professional landscape, looked like a little dollhouse. Now you go up there, two or three cars in the driveway, jacked up, no wheels on. She, before her health fell, she made a walk around the whole circle. Well, she had to quit that because she got around there, three pit bulldogs attacked her. All them houses up there now are rental houses. That's what happened to this place right here. Maybe not right now, but in a few years down the road, that's what's going to happen. And the traffic, like, two-hundred more cars. If you go up Nail Road to where the four-way stop sign is, at Nail Drive and Nail Road, there's two apartments up our complexes. They're not even counting them cars. Well, twenty going out, they, you got to go to the right and go down a quarter of a mile, make a U-turn and come back up. You can't cross over. So the people, instead of getting down at seventy-five and twenty and eighty-one, it's real congested down there, I know you know about that. They cutting through. Well, Alexander Road is a pig trail. So is Nail Drive. Already, man, I had on collision on Alexander Road. When it floods out, the county comes out there, like the other gentleman said, and puts up sign, "Road closed." Well, then here's, the beavers are bad because there's a pond right up above it, and I got a pond below it. Well, the beavers dam it up. Well, you can't get the county to come out there and bust that dam. So what they do, they come out there, the beavers try to plug that pipe. Well, I've been there forty-eight years, and it ain't nothing but a little bitty culvert. I've told them before, when they down there working on it, you need to dig this up and put a, a big pipe in, where the beavers can't pack it up. Well, they have dug so close to the road that they got into the pavement, and it's a big, I don't call it no names, well, they dug a hole right there to water the cows in. Well, now, they got a sign sticking up warning you, "If you get over there, you can fall off of that hole about five foot deep, probably about as big around as this area right here." Then the other side, you got the creek coming in. It's pitiful. And then when the traffic cuts through, they're going Mill Road, if you've ever been on Mill Road, it runs from eighty-one to Jonesboro Road. That's a two-mile strip through there. You got to know when to go through there, or you ain't going, because the traffic will back up from Mount Carmel Road all the way back to eighty-one. That's their cut through. To try to, it, it just can't move down at seventy-five and eighty and twenty-one.
I know, I live at everything. I'm, I'm in your backyard.
So you know where I'm coming from. So, and this Zoom meeting that they had, I was one of them on the phone. The, the gentleman was, you know, we really thought they was going to talk about something, but they didn't. After four people talked, and told them they was against this, they cut the meeting. I didn't, I didn't even get a chance to say nothing, because they didn't want to hear no more of it. He knew it was a lost cause. So we don't want to go from R2 to R5. We want to stay where we at. I'd appreciate it if y'all go with us. Thank you.
I want to come and see you about the beavers.
You want to, I'll put them standing.
You were talking about the beavers. Are they clogging up the, I need to come see that.
You got to come see it.
Uh-huh.
I'll take you over there. I'll take you to my pond and show you what I've had to do to my pipe, to, and they, fourteen foot deep. Pipe sticking up out of the water, you know, when it fills up, it runs out. They have built the dirt slough up, the last time I had it dug out with a backhoe car, two-hundred dollars. You know, I got a neighbor out over there.
We need to relocate the beavers.
He got them beavers too.
You can't shoot them beavers either.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
What you get with me, I'll show you them beavers.
I'll come see you, I'll come see you. Okay, you got a minute and two and one second to say what you're going to say.
Good evening, my name is Steve O'Brien, I live at four-fifteen Oakland Road. Oakland Road connects to Nail Road. As you're aware, they have just put a gas station at the intersection of Oakland Road and twenty. Oakland Road and these connecting roads are being used as an inter-county connector from Griffin, Spalding County, Pike County. So we have a major transportation issue. Oakland Road was built for a rural residential road. I supported it. I went out into the community and had Oakland Road paved with the county, to support the county, because it was, it was opposed by local residents. Now it's like an inters, it's a highway. Okay, so they raised the speed limit to forty-five. People were getting killed out at twenty in Oakland Road. So they moved the connector down. So now you've got a gas station, you've got traffic coming from Griffin and Hampton down, trying to make that left turn on Oakland Road. So all these people going to this new gas station are going to have to come down and turn around and come back to the gas station. After two or three o'clock in the afternoon, all the traffic going to the mall on Jonesboro Road is coming from Pike County and Griffin down Oakland Road. People driving fifty, sixty miles an hour. We've, we've come to the county, they can't get radar. We've requested radar, but the road is, can't, the infrastructure won't allow it. The intersections are not designed for that type of traffic. It's a public safety issue. Where Oakland Road connects to eighty-one, the, the height of the intersection is too high, and you can't see, the vision is obstructed. People running off the road all over the place. The, the county can't support it right now. We need public safety. We've got the best police department in, in the state, but we need more officers, we need more public safety. All these intersections need to be lit. You got five streets, you, from Oakland Road going all the way to one, West Ridge goes all the way to one-fifty-five. All that traffic is coming, one-seventy-five gridlocks. The Google Maps has Oakland Road as the interconnector. So all these, we got eighteen-wheelers coming down residential roads, no traffic control. So I support the county, but we need public safety. You know, we need DOT out there to try to figure this one out. Before, we don't need any more houses, because we've got people coming from five different counties through here. So we will really hope you reconsider on any more development in this area until we get DOT involved. Thank you, I'm Steve O'Brien, four-fifteen Oakland Road.
Oakland Road, okay, awesome. That gas station was zoned back in two-thousand-three by pre, by previous boards, so.
I understand.
That, that was, yeah.
It's not making any better.
Yeah, I know, it, it doesn't make it any better, yeah.
I'm an Oakland Road resident, so I agree with my neighbors. If y'all let this plan go through, you're killing us. Because now we've got so much traffic on Oakland trying to get out of eighty-four.
Madam Chair, he's going to need to come to the, to the-
Madam Chairman, he's gonna need to come to the, to the podium.
Yeah, yeah.
Police, fire safety, they all know, everybody knows.
Okay, well, time, time is up for public hearing. Thank you so much. Okay. All right, applicant, did you want to address any of these questions or concerns?
Yes, ma'am. And I know it's getting late in the evening, so I'll try to be brief. I just wanted to address a few of them. These are all for sale units. The rental restriction came from staff. I don't know why it was five percent versus ten. We're gladly proffer five percent as a rental cap here. There were some comments on Nail Road, you know, it's, it's a relatively newly paved road. A two-lane highway, or two-lane road can take up to fifteen thousand cars a day. There's nowhere near that amount of traffic on Nail Road. And our, my comparisons with the last development, we're not trying to compare locations, it was trying to compare the future land use map designation. So I was just making that comparison. So, I'm trying to convey to the board that we truly are a flexible group. We're not here to bring forward developments that everyone hates, that's hard for commissions to swallow, that barely work. And so, we had prepared a, what I'm calling an alternative site plan for this development. You know, as we said, we started with a hundred and twenty-two lots, we went down to ninety-two. Here up on the screen is a seventy-six lot plan, which is one point nine units per acre. Again, the subdivision immediately to our south has four hundred and fifty homes on it, and was developed at about two point five, two point six units per acre. That's West Ridge. So again, we're working really hard to try to mirror something that is below us, but then also the concerns of the folks that are to the north of us. And I think it's of note that pretty much everybody that got up and spoke tonight lives north of us, on the larger lots. So of course they're opposed to our subdivision. They have large lots, and we're proposing smaller lots. Who you didn't hear from tonight is, again, the four hundred and fifty families that live immediately to the south of us and touch our property. So having said all of that, this is a seventy-six lot plan. If the board is interested in learning more about this, we've made the lots wider, the road configuration is similar, and again, one point nine units per acre. We're happy to take a deferral and talk to staff about it, give the other departments a chance to review. For the neighbor that mentioned, you know, again, it's an alternative, the neighbor that lives immediately to our west on Nail Road, you know, we've got eight lots there along our entrance. If the board decides, hey, that's just too much right there against that house, we'd be okay either reducing that number of lots against that property line, or moving them all together. And so again, you know, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place, the desires of the neighbors and what the comp plan dictates. And so, you know, with that, I just wanted to show that plan, and again, happy to answer any specific questions you guys have.
Okay, thank you. You know, just to address the public, and I'm gonna turn this over to the district commissioner here, just shortly here. But, you know, some of the things that we have put in place to try to slow some of the growth down, we have raised impact fees, we have increased that to try to help slow some of the growth down. We, you know, anyone that knows me know that I'm a public safety commissioner, and I believe in fully funding our public safety, and we're going to continue to do that. And we're putting all of our funding that we have towards transportation, all of our SPOLOs, T-SPOLOs, congressional spending and those types of things, joint projects with the city. We are putting toward transportation just to try to play catch-up, because we are behind. And there has been a lot of growth. A lot of these things were put in place prior to many of us coming on board. But, you know, people that own property, just as you have a right to develop their, their property. And so, but there are things that we can help to minimize the impact. And so, with that being said, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Lewis to lead the way on this.
Right, did any other commissioners have any questions before I start? Okay, just a couple of things. I know, Mr. Allison, Kenta, first of all, thank you for the presentation. Mr. Allison, thank you for the presentation, and I really wanna thank all of, and I say my neighbors, all of my neighbors who are coming out. So I really appreciate you coming out and actually being a part of the process. It's extremely important to be a part of the process. Sometimes we have things come up and there's nobody here, but I think it lends a lot more impact when you come up and are involved and care about your community, because I think we all care about our community. Just, just a couple of things. I know, Mr. Allison, you keep on talking about the future land use map and, you know, what it dictates and things of that nature, and, and I probably shouldn't say this, but, you know, sometimes I just feel, it feels a little tone deaf. And what I mean by that is, it's a future land use map. Operator word being future. So I remember I heard somebody say, I think it was Mr. McClure, talking about today, today land use. Just because something's on a future land use map, that doesn't mean it's appropriate today. If you, and you frequently mention the four hundred and fifty houses in West Ridge, well, this doesn't front on West Ridge, this fronts on Nail Road. So the people who have to deal with the issues, they're gonna, people live on Nail, Alexander, Oakland, those are the folks who are gonna have to deal with all of the things that come along with this development. So, I understand what you're talking about, future land use map, and then you brought up the point, I think it was an ill point bringing up that, you know, people are confused as, you know, you know, what they're supposed to do because, you know, we're not abiding by the comprehensive plan. We're abiding by the comprehensive plan. It's a plan, it's a future land use map. At some point in the future, this may be appropriate. Maybe ten, fifteen years down the line, people sell their property, maybe it is appropriate. I don't think it's appropriate today. And I don't think anybody who's sitting over here, I haven't heard anyone else say that it's appropriate today. So, you know, I'm not gonna belabor the point, because I know we've been here a long time, but with that being said, I would like to make a motion to deny the proposal for the ninety-two homes.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor to deny? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is R Z twenty-four eleven, is that correct?
Correct. Good evening, once again. The item before use of property located at five 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 Pullen Road. Property is currently zoned RA Residential Agricultural, shown in green here on the maps. The rezoning request before you is to rezone the property from RA Residential Agricultural to R three Single Family Residence for the purpose of a conservation subdivision. Future land use map designation for the subject property is low-density suburban, supporting up to two dwelling units per acre net. And here are some existing developments within the area. If I'm not mistaken, these are, these are conservation subdivisions that we have showcased here. This is a yield plan of the development. And with that, the yield plan shows the maximum number of lots that may be developed on the site, meeting the minimum development standards of the R three zoning district as proposed. Based on this site plan, this is, this would net eighty-seven units with a density of one point seven five dwelling units per acre net. And again, this is the yield plan, so this is the maximum of lots they can, they can provide on this, on this subject property. With conservation subdivisions, we also do require a conservation plan, which requires increased perimeter buffers, hundred feet at the road, fifty-foot perimeter elsewhere, as well as conservation of at least forty percent of the space of the site to be preserved as open space. So, we look at the yield plan to see how many lots they can do, and then this conservation plan, you know, factors in all of those conservation efforts. That yield plan, again, eighty-seven lots to be conserved with some of that open area shown here. This site plan, I should note, is conceptual in nature, will need to meet all development standards at the time of permitting. And here are a few elevations of the proposed development. And some department comments that we've received from entities such as the Water Authority, DOT and Transportation Planning, School Board and Public Safety. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from RA to R three for the purpose of that single-family conservation subdivision, the yield plan and conservation plan indicating eighty-seven lots with a density of one point seven five dwelling units per acre. That future land use map designation of low-density suburban, supporting up to two dwelling units. On July eleventh, twenty twenty-four, the zoning advisory board did approve the applicant's concurrent conditional use request, CU twenty-four oh one, for that conservation piece with this, with this proposed development. That did have some conditions. Again, this is that conservation site plan. At that same zoning advisory board meeting on July eleventh, the zoning advisory board did recommend approval of the applicant's rezoning request, RA to R three, with the conditions shown on the screen. Thank you so much. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Yeah, do you want to get any questions?
Yes.
No.
Public hearing, you're with applicant.
That is correct.
Yes, this is public hearing, so, the chair just went to the restroom for a minute, but I guess I'll yield to the vice chair.
Yes, is applicant want to come forward?
Good evening again. Steve Moore, Moore Bass Consulting, thirteen fifty Keys Ferry Court, McDonough, Georgia. Here tonight representing Mr. James Strata, who is the property owner. Little different representation than the typical developer, builder group. This is just the, the man who owns this property and has for years and wants to rezone it so that he may have the opportunity one day to, to market this to a builder or a developer. But Kenta does, always does such a good job of summarizing everything, but I'll just reiterate a little bit more, fifty-nine acres. As you can see, we've, Southern Hills Development is immediately adjacent to the south, under construction right now. And then, just development patterns on both the, the north and the south side of that as well. The subdivision is proposed as a conservation subdivision. It's located in the Henry County Watershed Protection District. And by virtue of that, there is a maximum density that the Water Authority regulates that is one point seven five units per acre net density, which is what our plan proposes. We actually are a little bit less than that, we're one and a half units per acre of, for gross density. The aerial photo shows the site is very heavily wooded, especially with that long north-south connection to Pullen Road. So we proposed this plan as the yield plan, which is the first step in the conservation subdivision process. And we picked this route for a couple of reasons. One, due to the shape of the property and the goal of buffering those surrounding properties. And two, the fact that it's in the Watershed Protection District, we felt like, what better thing to do when you're in an area that's supposed to preserve land and protect a watershed, than propose a conservation subdivision? And we actually presented it to the Water Authority, and they, they have by virtue of their watershed ordinance, a minimum lot size established of eighteen thousand square feet under this scenario. And, but said that if you were willing to do it this way, that they would approve the smaller lot sizes. And I think it was the first approval that they had given in that vein, and I'm thankful for that, and I think it does make a lot of sense. So this is the conservation plan. You know, as you can see, there's a north connection to, to Pullen Road and a southern connection to a stub-out road in Southern Hills subdivision that was intentionally provided, I don't know if it was, came at the request of staff, it makes good planning sense to have a roadway connection, you know, stubbed out to adjacent properties. And so we've taken advantage of that with this conservation plan. The conservation plan requires buffer, significant buffers, a hundred-foot buffer off of the existing road furniture, and then fifty-foot perimeter buffers around all, all sides of the property. And in addition, forty percent of that total site area being preserved, a minimum of forty percent of the site being preserved as open space. As you can see, we've proposed forty-seven percent of that site to be preserved as open space. It meets those, those buffer requirements and the open space requirements. And just to go back, the roadway network really isn't that much difference between the two. If you kind of go back and forth, you just don't really have a whole lot of options, given the shape of the property. But what we did think was appropriate, especially in this conservation approach, is this giant boulevard, long, heavily vegetated entrance off of Pullen Road. We think it's gonna be a, just a really visually pleasing aspect of the community. And the connection to Southern Hills, we feel like is important for the roadway network to be able to allow people in Southern Hills, which is a very dense community, to have easy access to get out towards Highway twenty to Simpson Mill and then ultimately to twenty. So we felt like that was an appropriate transportation access, you know, feature to the project. We do a lot of work with communities that have a stub-out road that was planned fifteen years ago, and you try to connect to it, nobody wants, you know, after the subdivision's built out, nobody wants to connect to it. Nobody wants, that lives in that neighborhood wants this new road to connect to it. But these are fortunately both brand-new subdivisions, and I think it would be a very well-planned aspect of, of both of those communities. So the, that would be a representation of what that entrance would look like. We'll have the cross buck fencing and some hardscaping along that entrance. And again, that's a, I think it's a hundred-foot wide median entrance, the goal with it being as much of that existing vegetation preserved as possible within that median area. And then obviously we'll have the turning lanes and everything that the county would require for that access. So the elevations that are proposed here, again, this is, I'm representing the property owner, and this is unique and different than it has been in the last fifteen years, probably. There is no builder pick, there is no developer pick. And so we were struggled with providing staff elevations. So what we did is we picked elevations that were consistent with the surrounding area, the Southern Hills development, the Kensington Point development, or the, the Greystone Development, some others around it, in an effort to try to give you something to look at. But we have conceded that staff will have full authority to be able to review the elevations once a builder is selected, in conjunction with the commissioner, to be able to make sure that it represents the area the best way possible. So we have, that is part of the zoning conditions of this project. But that is, that is our request. We feel like we've, you know, we're thankful that we got a conservation subdivision approval from the zoning advisory board and their recommendation of approval of the rezoning request to R three. We also are thankful to have staff's recommendation of approval, and we've read through the conditions and are agreed, and agree with all of those. I think I've covered everything. There is a, an amenities center I didn't mention in the very middle of that project that will have a thousand-square-foot clubhouse, mail kiosk, picnic area. I think it was, was the, thousand-square-foot clubhouse was a zoning condition, I believe, or a thousand-square pavilion. Whatever it says in the zoning conditions as far as the amenities, I know we discussed, and we were, we're accept, we accept that as a recommendation. So again, thank you for the opportunity, look forward to answering any questions you have. Thank you.
Can you go back to the education screen?
Yes.
Can we finish the public hearing first?
Oh, will you look down there, I'm sorry.
I looked down at, I was looking at Johnny, because Johnny was leading it for the right. You were doing the public hearing?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Okay, this is a public hearing, all opposition want to come forward, please? Anyone in opposition?
How you doing? I'm Alfred Block here at 535 Pullen Road. I'm right there where the property turns and makes elbow. My house is right against the fence line, almost where he proposed to put the driveway. And I don't care if he builds houses, I just don't want his driveway to be up against where my property line is, right there where my house is.
Which house is yours? I'm sorry, sir.
535 Pullen Road. You can barely see it. Can you blow that up? Where they can actually see the home? A little bit down, right there somewhere. Yeah.
You're right in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you blow that up?
That's your house right there?
Yes, you can see it there, how close it is to the left.
Okay, I see.
Almost where it kicks, right there to the left, right there. They have their driveway that's coming around through there within 10 feet from my property. So I don't mind them doing it. I just wish they would put that road against the other side where it actually comes up now and stays away from me. And if they could put some type of privacy fence there so they wouldn't be looking over on me because I built off the road 1,600 feet, just to get away from people, you know. So, and then the drainage, far as all that water coming over on me from actually Kensington now, it stops up and it builds up, and I have a little lake here every time it rains. So just a few concerns to where I'd like to see if we could address it and get it handled. I'd appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in opposition? Anyone in favor? Come forward.
Steve Moore, can you come up and address the gentleman's concern about his driveway?
Yes, and I can assist with that. So with conservation subdivisions, I should also add that condition two, if I'm not mistaken, condition two has, you know, restricts the development to a conservation subdivision with a substantially consistent site plan such as that one, Exhibit A. Going back to conservation subdivisions, that does have a 50-foot perimeter buffer required by code. So along, you know, along this gentleman's property will be a 50-foot landscape buffer. I just want to be clear on that point.
But we have no problem moving that road. I mean, there's no great magic about that curvy serpentine road layout, and if I need to move it or flip it, that is A-OK. We truly had known and paid attention to that house and that location, we could have easily moved that. And that's something, as long as staff is, can be flexible in that site plan-specific approval condition and give me the permission to be able to flatten that curve back and move that road further to the, you know, maybe into the middle of the property. Right now, as Kenton mentioned, there is a 50-foot undisturbed buffer between the properties. But we can easily move that road another 50 feet or more to the, to the west to get away from his property. I completely understand. And as for drainage, whatever is coming onto that property from Kensington Point will get intercepted and routed to that pond and fix whatever drainage issues he's receiving from off-site. That is one thing I'm confident in.
Okay.
Did that address your concerns, sir?
Ma'am?
Did that address your concerns?
Yeah, if they wouldn't move it away from my fence line, because I'm 50 feet from that.
Yeah, I can see that.
My house is 50 feet from that, so just so everybody won't be driving by my house real close and have to hear all the cars.
That's easy to do.
Because that's going to be several thousand cars cut through there probably every day. People are wanting to go northbound.
Yeah, the part of the goal behind that curvy road was to not make it a fast cut-through.
That's what I was about to say.
Yeah, we wanted it to be, to slow people down, but that's, but as far as having the flexibility of just sliding that curve over or even reversing that curve so that it's a, you know, on the opposite side, that is, that's perfectly fine. Like I said, as long as staff's willing to work with us on those little minor modifications to the road configuration.
So can we make sure that that's noted?
Yes, in that condition, it does, the last line reads, "Acceptance of substantial deviations or adjustments from conceptual site plan shall be determined by Henry County P&amp;Z."
You got it, Stephen.
Now, can we do a privacy fence right there, up where my home is?
I mean, the vegetation that's there now is going to remain. It's going to, and it sounds like we're going to have 100-plus feet of woods between that road and there, so I mean.
Is there actually 100 feet between that two?
There's 50 feet shown on the site plan between the right-of-way and the eastern property line. And so we're willing to move that. And if you want to add as a condition, there's 100 feet along that property line, 100-foot buffer. That's perfectly fine as well. That helps.
Better than bad.
That's good. I do have a question.
You're on.
Oh, do you have a question?
You got it.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Kenton, as asked earlier, can you go back to the school board screen, please?
So with the Board of Education correspondence that we received as part of the applications submitted, the schools that would address the proposed development would be Luella Cluster Elementary, Middle, and High. Proposed development will generate 63 students as an estimate based on the 87 dwelling units.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson.
I had a question, just about the, and I knew that's what the curvy road was for, was to slow people down. And I've been inundated probably in the past couple of months with the people just talking about the speed, just the way people are speeding through our county. It's not just one subdivision, it's just all over the place. So my question is, have we ever required a neighborhood, and this may be for DOT or the county manager, have we ever required a neighborhood to put speed bumps in initially? Like when they build a subdivision? Have we ever done that?
Turn the table.
They're going like 80 miles an hour on Pullen Road, is a man.
Not that I'm aware of, Commissioner. One of the things I remember when we were looking at this development during our initial review is the length of this road, and that was one of the questions that I posed back to our DOT team, because there are some requirements on how long a road can be. So I'm sure once Steve sits down with our DOT staff, this road will have to have some type of roundabout or cul-de-sac every so many feet. So I know David, I believe David's still here. David Simmons in our DOT department, we worked with him. But David, I don't know, are you familiar with us requiring speed humps at the initial phase? And if you'll go to the podium for me? Thank you.
Good evening. I believe this board has conditioned speed hump before. I know at least a mixed use off of East Lake Road near Price Quarters, we required a single speed table. And I think we did one also, or the board did, for a neighborhood that was next to one of the zoning cases a few cases ago, that's south of Jonesboro Road, next to Traditions. So I think they required a, like a circle or roundabout type thing and a speed table. Otherwise, it's our speed table ordinance, which normally doesn't take effect until the place is pretty much built out. But the board has conditioned a speed table before.
And maybe a speed table, or like Sherry mentioned, a small roundabout in some area just to intentionally slow that traffic down. I'd rather see that than a speed table, but just something that either stop, that forces somebody to stop and turn around or a roundabout.
And Rocky mentioned it, we haven't done it in Henry, but I know Rockdale has kind of a, it's not really a roundabout. It's almost like a football-shaped median in the middle, and you go around it. The only thing I will say, I've been in one of those neighborhoods in Rockdale, people are pretty good at trying to straighten them out as they go through.
The reason I ask, and I would like something in the conditions that addresses that, because one of the things I actually like about this proposed subdivision is the connectivity with Southern Hills, because it gives people an option to not have traffic spill out on Walker Drive in front of the Luella Cluster. So I think this is, this would be great to have, but I want to be able to slow people down. I don't want people to make it a racetrack.
Totally agree. And we have zero issue with that, and I think, I feel like we could work with DOT to come up with a solution for that that might be an alternative, a more aesthetic alternative than a speed table, even if it's where that first curve to go north is, if we put a, almost a, an opposite, like to David's point, a bigger football, though, that you're not going to just drive over, but something that kind of forces somebody to stop and make a turn, you know, stop, some kind of a stop condition that gives a big median opening there that kind of forces people around. I can see it in my head. I wish I could draw it. I'd draw it for you.
If it just had some language in there that would address that.
Yeah, that would be.
If it's a pleasure of the board, absolutely.
Okay, all right. Any question?
Commissioner Wilson.
I do have a comment. Just keep in mind, when we're trying to control the speed down through here, we got to get the ambulances and fire trucks and police cars down through it in a time when manners as well, so kind of keep that in mind.
Yes, sir.
And all the school traffic coming to get through and saw that they had a slip.
So, Madam Chair, the public comment period has concluded, so we can't have additional comments. For the clerk, she can't record him from the audience.
Okay, all right. Are any additional conditions that you, or what do you, okay. Commissioner Wilson?
I don't have any more comments.
Okay, most again, thank you, Kenton. Thank you, Mr. Moore. No, I do like this subdivision. What I love about it is, like I've mentioned before, the connectivity. I love that there's connectivity between neighborhoods and there's an alternative for people, traffic-wise, to be able to get in and out. And what I most especially like about it is that it's a conservation subdivision, and I would love to lock that in. So this is not something that's going to be built tomorrow. This is just somebody who's looking for a way to, as you said, market their property at some distant point in the future. But if we could lock it into a conservation subdivision, I think that is, that is a huge win for us on the county side. So with that being said, unless there are additional comments from my colleagues, I would like to make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. No further discussions, all in favor?
And Sher, if I may quickly interrupt. We've discussed a few options, a few conditions here.
Okay.
You know, I think we're all in agreeance regarding the traffic calming or some sort of deviation to prevent speeding or whatnot. I think there was also just mention of increasing the buffer to 100 feet on that one side.
Yes.
The condition two, as staff has recommended and the zoning advisory board, conservation subdivision is built in there, and I think that is all of the comments, additional conditions.
I move to approve all additions and corrections.
Perfect. Just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Second.
We got a second. All in favor? Any opposed, motion carries?
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Debbie Rivers of Jonesboro, RA 2 C2 commercial property located north of Bill Gardner. Kenton?
Good evening, or rather, good night, once again, Chair, Board members. The item before you is a property located north of Bill Gardner Parkway, east of Highway 155. Property is currently zoned RA residential agricultural, and your request is to rezone the subject property from RA to C2 for a commercial development. Future land use map designation is Village, which would support the C2 zoning, request to C2. The Village future land use map designation is intended to support community centers, these nodes of commercial office and other uses to promote walkability and people-oriented developments. This is the site plan that was submitted with the application. I should note that this subject property is a portion of a larger commercial development. More specifically, this 11 acres shown here kind of outlined in red. There, here are some elevations that were submitted by the applicant, as well note that the site plan is conceptual in nature and would need to meet all development standards at the time of permitting. Here are some department comments. I want to add that this subject property is near the Mallard's Landing residential fly-in neighborhood. That future of those developments does have a private airstrip. Upon review of the request, there were some concerns at staff, you know, at the staff level, with the runway protection zone of this private airstrip. I should note, private airstrips are not subject to the same Federal Aviation Administration review criteria of public airstrips, for example. Nonetheless, staff wanted to address some of our concerns, which did result in condition 11, and I'll speak on that in a little bit. The applicant has requested to rezone the subject property from RA to C2 for that commercial development. The property is not within the boundaries of the highway corridor overlay district proper. However, it is intended to be developed in conjunction with that larger piece to the north, which is within the overlay. As such, staff felt it necessary to recommend that those, that the development be subject to the highway corridor overlay district standards as it relates to architectural and streetscape requirements. Again, that's the site plan there with the 11 acres on the right side of the plan that is the subject of our case tonight.
So Kenton, go back, I'm sorry, go back to the 11 acres. Where does the 11 acres start? Show me on the, on the map, yeah, show me on this here where the line is right there? That's the 11 acres that's being?
That is correct.
Okay, all right.
Off of Bill Gardner Parkway, that's correct.
Okay.
On June 13 of this year, the zoning advisory board did recommend approval of the applicant's request with conditions. Staff has since modified, recommended conditions to read as follows. Thank you so much. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have. Going quickly back to the RPZ, Runway Protection Zone, we did add condition 11. There should be no structures located within the Runway Protection Zone for the Mallard's Landing airstrip, which, to my understanding, the applicant is comfortable with. Thank you so much. Happy to take any questions you might have.
So, yes, I do have a couple of questions. Is this a public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, never mind, I'll hold my questions. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come to speak in favor of this project, please come forward. You have a collective total of 10 minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Andy Welch, representing the Debbie Rivers and Lewis Grove Development. Members of the board, it's a pleasure to be here tonight with you at this hour. The, Kenton has gone through the rezoning requests, very, it's very straightforward. It's a village node, and we're asking for a C, it's a RA zone property, we're asking for a C2 commercial. That will actually marry up with the adjoining 15 acres, which are 14 acres, that's also C2 adjoining and has an M1 portion. So back in the day, someone had zoned it for the M1 for, I think, a self-storage facility. And then, but that's not on this particular property, it's next door. So this request is to take the RA Miss Rivers property and is zoned it to C2, and then they'll combine both of those properties into one development that you saw earlier, into the grocery store anchor with the out parcels fronting 155 and the out parcels that will lead to Bill Gardner Parkway. We are good with the staff's conditions, we worked through those. I think there, was there a change relevant to that when the dedication, the right-of-way was going to occur?
Yes, yes. 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 The...
There's a, well, he's, there's a, there's a staff splosh and G, and H, HC dot wanted to, needed some right-of-way along the frontage of Bill Gardner Parkway to widen that road. You have a splosh projects widening that road at that intersection. So, the conditions require a 30-foot dedication along Bill Gardner Parkway plus a 10-foot easement, construction easement, which is included in the conditions of zoning. And so I think we've clarified that.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. With that, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll just take questions about the development to see if there are any from you all.
Well, I'm, well, wait until, do, see if we have anyone here to speak, and any other people wanting to speak in favor of the project. If not, is there anyone here to speak in opposition of the project? Okay. I did have a couple of questions. I had questions about the, so the 11 acres will comply with overlay?
We will, as to the, not to the limitation of uses, but it will comply with the architectural requirements of the overlay and the landscaping and the 12, the 10-foot wide sidewalk that's required along the frontage, streetlights on the frontage, so that it will all look the same as you drive by Bill Gardner.
Okay, so go back to the site map. So, with the portion that, and this is what my concern, if it's not complying with overlay, that mean that just about anything can go in there, and I have a concern for that.
Okay. The, the staff noted that, and so did the planning commission, and we listed out a list of things that would not be prohibited, would not be allowed in that zoning. Pond shops and loan brokers, mortgage brokers, tattoo parlors, body, body piercing shops, vaping, e-cigarette shops, laundry mats, nail salons, automobile shops, and rental vehicles as an equip, and equipment as a primary use. Staff has already gone ahead and eliminated a lot of those uses that would tend to be a problem.
Okay, then, so that would be, including the 11, the 11 acres, these would be prohibited?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, the other question I had was regarding the detention pond. We have an ordinance say that the detention pond should be underground. So, I have a concern with regards to that detention, detention pond. So how are we addressing that?
Yes, ma'am. So...
Yes, sir.
First of all, I want you to, you, tell me what the ordinance says.
Yes, ma'am. This was ordinance 2310, adopted in November 28, 2024, which does include section 80403. The section in reference is 80403A4. Detention facilities for non-residential developments shall be underground detention retention facilities. Yes, ma'am. With that, I think the intent behind the ordinance was to maintain beautification of these commercial developments, big or small. When it comes to underground detention for larger developments...
It says commercial. Don't say whether it's large or small.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, we, we have, a portion of the property has, has been designated for where the grocery store side is. There's a portion of this property that's already been developed for a detention facility and was already grandfathered in with a previous land use development, and, and the permits were issued for it. We're, we're hopeful that all of this will drain into one facility here and it, so that it aesthetically will be off to the side and to the back of, and not, not fronting any of the main roads. So that's, that's the goal here. So, staff has worked with us to recognize the existing pond that is on a portion of this property that will be developed into the shopping center. And so...
But that doesn't, that doesn't include the 11 acres.
It, it will, when we, when, when it lays out, you see how that, you see how that, in this layout, that the largest detention pond is, is, it's actually, the red, the red line would go through it. So, staff has worked with us because of that to try to integrate these uses into one pond, and requiring us in the conditions to put a water feature into that pond so that it would not look like your traditional, just hole in the ground with, with, and fenced off, but actually be integrated into the site and made to look aesthetically pleasing, buff, landscaped appropriately, and then placed a water feature in it so that there would be a decorative element to it.
Okay, so that's, so can you put that in there, feature? I want to see.
Yes.
Feature, no, no. You need to, it needs to specifically say, a water feature, you know, I want to see some, something, because what ends up happening is that we get these detention ponds, you put a fence around them, it grows up, they get, you know, nobody's taking care of it, and, you know, we just have a mess. And so then, you know, people are calling the county about detention ponds, and we're not cleaning up detention ponds on commercial property. So, you got to do better with this. We have an ordinance says that anything commercial, it should be underground.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, we, your staff has been, let's say they put the hammer down on us pretty hard in this process, while recognizing that, that the commercial development's appropriate for this corner. And, but, and so in addition 13, we were trying to negotiate with that even more, and the staff basically said no. So, condition 13 does require that as, is either we'll, we have to do it underground, or we'll have to put in that water feature that you said, and it does say that there, a feature when the development shall include a method of water movement associated with that, the detention pond on the 11 acres.
And, and I would like to add that, that those two bullet points, it does come straight from that detention ordinance. That is more specifically 80403A3, which discusses and talks for residential developments. So, we, we did take this language straight from, straight from the ordinance and, and kind of merged it with this condition here.
We, we also noted that the, that, that staff has also been directing us and encouraging us to, to integrate pedestrian pathways within the development and to landscape accordingly. So, we have met with a couple of the commissioners about that and integrated a much more walkable plan that was initially contemplated, so that you can, you can move, you could park your car and move around this facility easily without having to worry about, you know, the traffic that moves through it. That was also an issue that was pushed by staff, and we have integrated that into the site plan that was just shown above. And then we've also moved the canopy and structures that were in that runway protection zone, even though that's for Mallard's Landing, even though it's not required legally, staff was legitimately concerned about protecting that flight zone, that landing, the runway zone. And so we have agreed to a condition, and that is condition 11, that would eliminate any structures from being in that runway protection zone. So, a lot, a lot of hard work has gone into this with, with the staff to recognize many of the concerns that you've raised with us, both publicly and privately. We're trying to integrate this into one large complex. I would point out that by comparison, you know, this is a 15, this is 11 acres, the whole thing's about 24 acres. This is a very small site relative to the East Lake Kroger. The East Lake Kroger's a 34-acre site. It's a lot more flexibility with the land there to build in your facilities than of this particular one. But as you saw, and you may be familiar with, there's a railroad track that's on the backside of this property, then you have Mallard's Landing on the other side of the railroad tracks, and you're caught by Bill Gardner Parkway, which is being widened to a four-lane road, 155, which desperately needs to be widened to a four-lane road. And, and that, you have that major commercial node right there where those two roads intersect. And it's, it's, to me, it's ideal for that commercial development, because otherwise, what would you put in this particular area? You're, you've got the veterinarian clinic, if you remember, on 155, and then the gas station at the corner. What's going to go behind there? This seems like the, the most beneficial, both to the public in the area for competition with the publics across the street. It also will provide that commercial node and increase tax base for the, for the county. So, with that, unless you have other questions, we would respectfully ask for your approval with the staff's conditions.
Okay, this is in Commissioner Johnny Wilson's district, so I'll hand it over to him.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. All these, all these conditions look good. I know you've been working hard with, with the applicant to get all these done. I appreciate all the hard work, because it's been going on for several, several, several months. I'm good with all the conditions, and so I don't have any other comments.
Okay, Commissioner, I bet you want to make a...
So, with that, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. No further discussion from the board. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, members. And may I say, go Falcons? I wore my tie for it, ma'am.
Okay. Do, do we need to do the other items first?
Yes.
Stephanie?
We have one more, the CIE.
I, I know, but I'm asking Stephanie about... Okay, okay, okay. All right. So, we have a resolution by Henry County Board of Commissioners to transmit the state-required capital improvement element annual update and CIE community work program to the Atlanta Regional Commission for evaluation by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. Tucson.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners, and the pillars of the community. We'll make this short and sweet. Each year, Henry County is required to provide a capital improvement element annual report to Department of Community Affairs to maintain our qualified local government status. A capital improvement element is part of the comprehensive plan that outlines where and when new capital facilities will be built and how they may be financed. These next few slides just identifies funding sources, and this is actually a project list that we got from the various departments, you know, identifies the funding source via impact fees and or splosh. This is the water authorities' portion of the CIE and their project list here. A lot of these are completed projects, but also some that are still in progress. So, we're just ask, we're asking permission to, from the board to transmit to DCA.
Okay, any questions from the board? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is anyone wishing to come and make public comment with regards to this matter? Hearing none. Public comment is over. Any Commissioners have any comments? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a couple of items that we need to walk onto the agenda. One is a ordinance to enact a moratorium. Commissioner Lewis, would you want to?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Also, Vice Chair Commissioner Wilson and my colleagues, county manager and staff, county staff, and most importantly, the citizens of Henry County. It's been something I've been trying to work on for about a year now, and it's finally come to fruition, thankfully. So, at this time, I would like to call for a moratorium on rezonings, comprehensive plan amendments, lot modifications greater than five total acres of area, as well as commercial and residential development applications in the Atlanta Motor Speedway and Airport area for the map that you see on the screen, and all said parcels within the area, which is over 100 parcels. This moratorium will not stop a private property owner from building a single-family residential accessory structures, but will reject all applications for mass development such as subdivisions or commercial complexes in this area until an Atlanta Motor Speedway and Airport area master plan has been devised by staff and consultants.
Is there any questions from the board?
With that, I move that we approve this moratorium for this area, which comes as the Atlanta Motor Speedway and Airport area.
And this, and this moratorium will be for up to one year?
Up to one year.
Okay, so got a motion and a second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. One other item that we need to walk on the agenda, we're going to have the county attorney come. The other item is the IG aid that we have with the Henry County Development Authority. Do, Stephanie, do we have a packet for that item? Because of the moratorium that we've put on the airport, this also will encompass the property that we currently, that we currently have, that we entered into an agreement with the Development Authority, but with the moratorium, we're going to have to rescind the resolution?
That's correct. So, this is a resolution.
I'll let you explain.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, this is a resolution by the Henry County Board of Commissioners to rescind approval of an intergovernmental agreement that was entered into with the Henry County Development Authority dated April 23rd, 2024, and that intergovernmental agreement was for the marketing of certain property that's located by the Atlanta Motor Speedway.
Are there any questions from the board with regards to this?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions, please.
Okay, go ahead.
So, we're rescinding this agreement for what reason now?
It's being rescinded in light of the moratorium that the board just approved.
Right, but can this market, can this still be marketed with that moratorium in place?
No, it will not be marketed with the moratorium in place.
So, was the, was the pro, was the proper documents given to the Henry County Development Authority where they could market the place, this piece of property?
Proper, I'm not sure what documents you're referring to, Commissioner Lewis. I mean, Wilson, my apologies.
I mean, for them to market a piece of property, they have to have closing statements and everything that, from, from the county to, over to the Development Authority where they could market the property?
The closing statements that the county had in its possession were sent to the Development Authority, yes.
So, they had everything they needed to market the property for a market?
As far as the county is aware, yes, they did.
That's all we got. Now, really, all this is news to me, and all this is in my district. Both of these are my district, and this is news to me. This is first I've heard of it tonight. This is first I've heard of it tonight.
Okay, any other question? I'm sorry.
I said, this is, both of these are my district. This is the first I've heard of both of these tonight. So I think, I think our communication has been, has, have been lacking with these two walk-on items.
Okay, all right, I take note of that.
I'm sorry.
I say, I take note of that, yes. Okay, Stephanie, need to get clarification as to who made the second on this, on the last motion?
I, I did, but like I told her to look at the table.
Okay, well, we're not going to have time either way. I don't care who makes the second.
Who made? I made the second.
Okay, so she made the second, that's fine, okay. County Manager, what is the, the next step? I'm sorry.
The board needs to vote on the resolution that the County Attorney is presenting.
To rescind the-
Correct.
The resolution where we approved to give the, to allow the-
Development Authority to market the property.
Development Authority to market the property?
Yes.
And that's, the resolution was Resolution 24-126.
So there's, can I get a motion, or I'll make a motion to rescind the resolution to market the property due to the fact that we have the moratorium to give us opportunity to continue to do a comprehensive plan as to how we're going to plan out the airport. Can I get a second? Got a motion and a second.
And I'm going to make a comment again. This is the first time I've heard about either one of these, and this is in my district. A walk-on should not be allowed for someone's district without them being notified. The District Commissioner was not notified about either one of these walk-ons.
Did you listen to her text?
I did.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner Wilson, I sent you a notification earlier today.
I'm sorry?
I sent you a notification earlier today about the moratorium.
Email or the phone call?
I texted you along with the other Commissioners earlier today.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second, all in favor. Those that oppose, motion carries. Stephanie, we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Any.
Okay. I need to get approval of the minutes for July 23rd, July 30th, August 6th, and August 20th. Can I get a motion to approve? All of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve all of the minutes.
Okay. Got a motion, the second, all in favor. Motion ca, any opposed to the minutes?
Okay.
Upcoming meetings, October 1st, 2024, 9:00 a.m., October 15th, at 6:30, and October 24th is a special call joint meeting with Henry County Water Authority, Development Authority. I need a motion for us to enter into executive session to discuss property acquisition.
I move that we go into executive session to discuss property acquisition.
Got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? We're going to convene into executive session. I need a motion to reconvene.
I move that we reconvene.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Now I need approval of an affidavit, for the affidavit and resolution pertaining to our executive session. Can I get a motion?
Move that we approve the affidavit concerning executive session.
You get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any other actions, Stephanie, that we need to take?
Any.
Okay, meeting is adjourned.